So we're going to start with a moment of silence. Thank you. Great, now we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have the roll? This is the time that we have approval of the proposed agenda?
A move for approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving of the agenda?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Now we get to do the comments from the public. Amy Ogden is first on the list. Welcome. Let me say that the Charlottesville City School Board welcomes comments from the members of the community. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, thank you.
My name is Amy Ogden and my address is 214 Camelia Drive. Good evening, Dr. Atkins and members of the school board and fellow citizens. My name is Amy Ogden and I'm an Associate Professor of French at the University of Virginia and the mother of a fourth grader at Jackson Villa and a sixth grader at Walker Upper Elementary. As a number of you know, I've written and encouraged others to write to oppose the elimination of Spanish as a requirement for all fifth and sixth graders. Dr. Hastings has shared with Walker parents and the board information about the pressure from some students and their families for varied programs and for choice and the interest in STEM. He's also shared a survey conducted among students that showed extremely low interest in Spanish. I am not here to oppose increased choices or the expansion of options and certainly I'm not here to oppose making school more exciting and fun for the students. I am here to push back against the idea that if Spanish isn't exciting and fun right now, that's because it can't be. It can. And I'm here to push back against the creation of a false choice between Spanish and STEM that will invariably lead to the further deterioration of the Spanish program. Losing Spanish is not good for our children now, it's not good for their future, and it's not good for our community. The scientific research is clear that learning a foreign language increases all kinds of cognitive abilities, it increases test scores, and it decreases cultural sensitivity. Studying Spanish in particular can show students the value of Hispanic cultures, cultures that I believe are extremely important to our community as well as to our nation. The current plan for Walker is based on the assumption that in order to create options and choice and the possibility for STEM education, we have to sacrifice something and that that sacrifice, that Spanish is that thing that can be sacrificed. But if there's a moment to invest in Spanish and not sell it out, that moment is now. Dr. Hastings' survey tells you about the rough spot that the courses in Spanish are in now, when both lack of resources and poor scheduling are damaging them. The survey does not reflect where Spanish could be if the school systems, if they had the school system's conscientious support. This year, Spanish at Walker is being treated as a pullout from math, not even language arts. So families have the impression that their children's math education is being sacrificed to Spanish. That's no way to increase enthusiasm for it. Once Spanish is scheduled in its own time slot, as I understand it will be, I think a lot of the dissatisfaction will disappear. And if Spanish one could be spread across fifth and sixth grade so that kids could get into a level of Spanish where they're actually learning to put groups of sentences together meaningfully, then I think we'll see a lot more enthusiasm. The question has been raised about how developmentally appropriate a high school class could be for fifth graders, but let's talk about what they're really learning. Shouldn't we expect fifth graders to be able to introduce themselves and to make a basic cartoon about meeting a famous Spanish-speaking person? And what about STEM? How do we keep it in the Spanish requirement? Well, why not hire a bilingual Spanish teacher, bilingual STEM teacher, and teach STEM and Spanish together for those who want choice?
Ms. Ogden, your time is up.
Okay. If we're serious about equity and cultural sensitivity, then we have to care about Spanish and we have to build it up, not chop it away. I urge you to reverse the decision to eliminate Spanish requirement from fifth and sixth grades and instead to show your commitment to equity and diversity by investing minimal resources in the elementary Spanish program. Thank you.
Dr. Shields?
Good evening. I just wanted to make a quick comment about how excited I am about the fact I just heard that we're thinking about continuing to push engineering down to lower levels, down to the fifth and sixth grade. I am selfishly, I think that's a pretty amazing thing for us to be doing as a school system for a couple of reasons. One, five years ago, we started our program here and we started something called Engineering, and it was Engineering One five years ago, and I think I had about thirty students in that first class, and as you guys know, it's grown a ton over the last five years. We're just starting to get our numbers in for who's enrolled in Engineering for next year. We're looking at about two hundred and ten, probably once out of district kids sign up, we're looking at about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty kids sign up for Engineering just here at CHS, and that doesn't include Beaufort. So it's an exciting program that a lot of students are getting a lot out of. You can see the video over there, we just got back from a trip to CERN, and when you go to CERN, the reason we take that trip is it is the Mecca of science and engineering and pushing the boundaries of human knowledge, so it's an exciting field to be a part of. So what we're doing here in our school system has been, I think, remarkable for the last five years, and I've been lucky to be a part of it. And as a parent of a five-year-old who's going to be going to Clark next year, if we can keep pushing this down, I'm really excited about that. And one of the things I've seen as we continue to try to make our engineering program available to younger and younger students, I don't see a limit to how far we can push that down because what our students are learning, our students are learning problem solving, learning collaboration, and learning familiarity with some important 21st century tools, and I don't know of an age where that's not an important thing to be teaching our children. So if we can start getting our fifth and sixth graders and even younger than that familiar with some of the tools like computer programming, just the concepts that undergird a computer programming education, that'll better prepare our students for, to be successful here at CHS and obviously to be successful in college and in the workforce and beyond. Every year, we have students leave our engineering program and become amazing success stories all over the world, and I'm just excited to make those available to more and more kids. As I'm hearing about what my students are planning on doing next year, well, we've got our second Jeff Scholar in two years, we've got kids just doing amazing stuff all over the world, it's exciting. So the more broad we can make those opportunities, it's exciting to me, and I think we should all be excited about that.
Thank you.
Go Who's.
Kara West and Avery Shearer.
Hi, good evening, I'm Kara West and this is my son, Avery Shearer. What grade are you in?
Fourth.
What school?
Burnley Moran.
Fourth grade at Burnley Moran. We came last month when the Energy Performance Resolution was introduced to express our support, and we wanted to come back and reaffirm that support and encourage you to pass that resolution tonight. And Avery has something to give to Ms. McKeever. It is, you can tell her how many signatures?
Yeah.
Okay. It's some... And those, thanks Avery. Those signatures were collected for online and in person by Generation 180 in support of this resolution, and it shows much wider community support than people who are perhaps able to come to the school board meeting to speak in person, so we wanted to share those with you, and thank you for your consideration of this resolution.
Do you have anything you want to add? Okay. Thanks, y'all, appreciate your support. Gudron Campbell? Please, Gudron, how do you say your name?
Gudron.
Sorry, yes.
Before I begin, I'd like to say that I'll be talking about climate change and the environment, but I participated in the Strike for Equity in CCS and I support the CHS BSU and their actions. Hello, my name is Gudron Campbell and I'm eleven years old. I'm a student at Walker Upper Elementary School, and I organized a school strike for climate justice on March fifteenth. I organized the strike to make my voice heard and the voices of children who would like futures similar to the ones older generations had the luxury of taking for granted, because children should not have to choose between an education and a future. Because according to the UN, we have eleven years to act. Because we're in the midst of a crisis, yet the world moves on. We go to school every day and learn about cells, not climate change, but there's still time. Charlottesville City Schools needs to add climate change to the curriculum for science in grades kindergarten through eighth, so kids grow up understanding this crisis. CCS needs to add a compost system to the schools and recycling to reduce waste drastically and to conserve resources. CCS needs to move the schools to renewable energy and to switch out the fluorescent light bulbs with LEDs. Thank you for your time. I hope Charlottesville City Schools can work on a more sustainable and better future.
Thank you. That was all the folks who signed up. If you would like to make a comment, feel free, this is the time. Please state your name and your address, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. DeeDee Smith, 2652 Jefferson Park Circle, alum, parent of Jackson Villa, Walker, Beaufort, and CHS. And I too would like to say kudos to the Black Student Union for their ten demands for racial justice in our school system. I'm in total support, but as you all know, it's simply not enough to wait until high school, I don't think that's actually what they're saying, but to make a difference in children's lives. You know the research, if a child is not reading at grade level by the third grade, it is very unlikely that they'll ever catch up. And you can graduate them, I mean, you're actually quite good at that, but that doesn't mean that they'll have the skills they need to have a chance to break the cycle. So I'd like to propose an additional demand to you all, that every child under your care by the third grade is reading at grade level, even if that means one-on-one private tutoring, which is, as we all know, how parents with economic choices assure that their children do not fall behind or catch up when they do, and they do. It's reasonable to ask at this point whether that's going to make a difference at high school, are our high school children the same children as are in third grade? I sent the data to you actually a while ago, and I will send it again to you tonight, but in your current eighth grade, going to high school next year, sixty-three students failed their last English SOL. Of those sixty-three children who failed the English SOL, only fifteen of them actually enrolled after the third grade. So only fifteen of the sixty-three were not in third grade in this system. Of those sixty-three children who failed the English SOL, more than half of them have been enrolled in the Charlottesville City Schools since at least kindergarten, so we're including preschool. And to link back to the BSU's demands, of those sixty-three children who failed their English SOL in the eighth grade, eighty percent are African-American. And remember, this is sixty-three children in one grade. Do the math, it's horrifying how many children are being left behind under your watch. There is a reason at one time in Virginia law that it was deemed unlawful to teach a Negro, as it was said in the law, to read or write, because literacy is power, literacy is freedom to make choices. You'd think we would have made more progress in two hundred years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Okay. We're going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is board responses or board comments. I will start with Mr. Mickey.
I went to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee last month, and it didn't really have anything specific school-related things other than the exciting opening of the skate park, which is just a quarter mile away from here, and I hope that our high school will take advantage of it with a club or a sport or that sort of thing. It's an amazing facility and it's right here at the doorstep of both Walker and CHS, and it seems like we ought to more formally take advantage of that in some way. That's it.
Also, if you have a student who's going to take advantage of Parks and Rec Summer Camp, now is the time to enroll.
Yes.
It's going to be at three of our elementary schools this summer, and they fill up quick, and it's the best deal in town.
That's a great deal.
And the county students will be able to come, register starting May, so it's important to get your city child into the summer camp as soon as possible, so you don't get on the waitlist. You just go to the website, the Parks and Rec website, or you can go to the Parks and Recreation Office downtown to register. Also, there are scholarships available.
Definitely.
Mr. Bryant, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
I'll share my comments at the end.
Yes, sir. Dr. Kraft?
Okay. Well, I would like to thank everybody who is here tonight and those of you who came up to speak and tell us what you think, and also lots of parents who've emailed us about matters that they're concerned about. It's really important for us as school board members to hear from you, whether, you know, you disagree with something that we've done or it's a different issue. So I just want to thank you for that and thank you for showing up. So what I'd like to do at the moment, I would just like to give a shout-out to Charlottesville High School, who, the high school is the recipient of a mental, a pilot mental health first aid program, and this is a really big deal. We were, I guess, there were eight schools across the country that got chosen to participate in this pilot program, and so Charlottesville High is one of them. So this program, and this is going to be implemented like right away this spring, this program will provide direct instruction to students on how to recognize signs of a mental health crisis or drug addiction, and also how to respond. And, you know, it's, you know, as we all know, you know, we've been, our schools have been through a lot, and I think the students have been through a lot too. But the statistics are very alarming in terms of the mental health issues experienced by middle and high school students. According to the 2017 Virginia Youth Survey, one in five females and one in ten males students in middle school have seriously contemplated suicide over the past twelve months. And, you know, this is a real concern, so there's a real need to have more hands-on approaches, to actually have some actions that students can take to, you know, whether it's themselves who are experiencing this or a friend. And I will say, you know, as a psychologist who's worked in the community for many years, there are a lot of kids who are very concerned about one of their friends and how their friend's doing, and they don't know what to do about it. They don't know who to talk to about it, they don't, you know, they just don't know how to cope with this, it's a big burden for them. So I think this program is a very important, essential attempt to do something about this here, and hopefully we'll be hearing more about the, they're going to be collecting data, and we'll hear a little bit more about that and the effectiveness of this program, but it's important that we, we were chosen to do this, and I think it's a great opportunity for Charlottesville High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ogden. Ms. Perrier?
So happy birthday for the fiftieth time to our board member to my left. I hope you are having a wonderful day, and thank you for consenting to be with us this evening. I want to give a special thanks to Dr. Atkins and her administrative team for once again allowing me to represent the school division. I am a member of Q, which is the Council of Urban Board Educators, which is one of the four subcommittees for the National School Board Association, and we had a very important role at our most recent meeting, and I'm sure other people will speak to you about that. But everyone has recognized what our school division has been through, but we are constantly receiving kudos for what we are trying to do. One, if you don't know, Dr. Atkins happens to teach with one of the areas within the National School Board Association for up-and-coming superintendents, and one of her former students did a capstone project on diversity, and some of the things that we're doing in diversity and with our diversity committee, she reminded me, we've done that before. I said, "Oh, we have?" She says, "Well, I had to do it for an assignment." So at least we know that we are attempting to do the right thing. I also had an opportunity to meet with various people from other places around this country that are also dealing with the equity issue. We are not alone in this, we are not the first people to ever undertake this, and we need to all remember that it's something that happens gradually, it doesn't happen overnight, and that this is an effort that everyone must participate in, whether you are the students, the people on the ground, or the school board members. We all have a part to play in this, and I'm just very pleased that people are beginning to roll up their sleeves regardless of how difficult this may be, but saying that we are Charlottesville, we are one, and we're going to get through this together, and still we rise.
Mr. Wade?
Later.
Okay. And Ms. Torres? Yes, of course.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, for attending, also thank you for those who shared their comments and came up to speak earlier. A couple of things I've done are to participate and attend the Equity Committee, our subgroup, which is looking at the equity foundations and policy, so we held a nice first meeting and had a lot of really productive time, the opportunity to talk and share ideas and come together and, again, building relationships with a lot of different people, but some good work and some ongoing hard work that is just beginning about equity. So I believe Dr. Atkins will have an update about that later, but that was a really worthwhile two to three hours of time, I think, so, four, okay, maybe four hours. Also, attended a preschool steering committee meeting with Dr. Kraft. Always a wonderful opportunity, and the preschool group is doing a lot of great work, and we hope to hear from them at some point during the year, just because they're doing a lot of wonderful things, working in the community, doing several pilots in different schools. And I just wanted to remind everybody that the registration for three-year-olds, interviews for the three-year-old spots are happening April 25th at Carver Rec. So if you know of anybody who is interested in a three-year-old spot in our preschool, please share that, and there's information on the website for that. Also was able to attend, and maybe Mr. Wade will talk about it later, but the UVA Task Force held a presentation here at CHS two weeks ago, I believe, where they were to share, or they, in a public setting, shared the information on the work that they've done coming together up until this point to kind of narrow down their top four topics, I believe. So that was, again, another wonderful opportunity to hear what that group is doing, and I look forward to seeing and hearing how President Ryan moves toward with some of those topics. Attended our Housing Advisory Committee meeting, which meets once a month, and that's coming up again. I attended a Burnley Moran PTO meeting, had the opportunity to talk a little bit about some of the equity and budget things as the ongoing budget work sessions were happening before city council finalized the budget, so that was a nice opportunity to meet with some local families there. This week, was able to attend an event on Tuesday, I believe, at the Downtown Mall, and I guess it's associated with the TomTom, but it was the African-American Teaching Fellows, City of Promise, and Abundant Life, the three of those nonprofits were cosponsors, and Black Panther was shown at the Paramount as a free movie for the community, but what I appreciated was getting to spend some time talking to the folks at Abundant Life who I hadn't really, didn't have a whole lot of knowledge about, but it was just really refreshing to see and hear the work that City of Promise is doing, African-American Teaching Fellows are doing, and Abundant Life, and just the overlap in meeting some community members that were invited, who all really are so, so devoted and motivated to make a difference and be involved, but just those three different groups coming together, so that was nice. And then just a reminder that our next special advisory, or, yes, CAC, Special Advisory, drawing a blank.
Special Ed.
Thank you, Special Ed Advisory Committee. The next meeting is April 24th at 5:30, so that's also on the schedule.
Where is that?
That will be downstairs.
Division Annex?
Thank you.
Great.
And that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, everyone, thanks for coming. So I was thinking about my comments, but I was actually watching the video up there from Bacon, so if you have a chance to watch that, you should watch it, because it's pretty cool. I, this week, had the opportunity to participate in the TomTom Festival, and we had some Black Knights present onstage and at the Paramount and like the expo portion of the Youth Innovation Conference. So I served as a social impact judge, but the, there was a group that went onstage, I think they're called Stand With Me, and they're talking about sexual assault and sexual violence. So I think that the AVID program is doing a lot of work to make sure that students are being innovative and thinking about solving social justice issues through like projects and STEM-type of concepts and ideas, so that was pretty cool. Then on Tuesday, I went to the African-American Teaching Fellows panel that had an Albemarle County educator, Dwanisha Evans from Teach For America, and Lauren, Dr. Lauren Mims from UVA Curry, along with Dr. Diaz, the director. So that was about like retaining African-American teachers and keeping them supported, so I thought that that was a really good panel, and I think it was recorded, so hopefully if you have the chance to look it up on the TomTom website, I think it would be good to look at. And that's all.
Great, I'm going to reserve my comments until the end as well. So we're now at the portion of the agenda, the consent agenda.
I'll move for approval of the consent agenda as stated.
Second. Okay, all of those in favor of passing the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the Energy and Water Performance Resolution, Ms. Powell.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Atkins and members of the board. This resolution was presented for your consideration at the last board meeting, and we have Kirk Visier here with us from the city. He oversees the initiatives around energy and water, energy management, water conservation and so forth, so if you have other questions that you would like addressed before you take action, he is here to provide responses.
Great. Does anybody have any questions about the resolution?
I'll move its approval.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion around the resolution?
I just want to say that I'm glad that our students, this is something that they really took hold of. I think that they see that this is, that this is a planet that they're going to inherit, and they want it to be the cleanest and the best it could be. and they want it to be the cleanest and the best it could be. So I'm glad that they kind of took hold of this and moved it forward, so.
It's worth a mention, and this really is a, it was planned before the resolution was even introduced to you, but starting this month, actually, was it this past week or the week before, we started to include Nigel Standish from the STEM program in our monthly meetings. So we are actively working on some of the curriculum elements that the students spoke about, and you didn't know that. I don't even know if I, I think I mentioned that to Dr. Atkins. But I was like, "Good."
Thank you. Is there any other questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. So thank you, everybody, for all the work on this. Also, very much in support of this. And I was just curious, I mean, Dr. Atkins, I believe you mentioned last time we all looked up at the lights. So I'm curious if there's a committee, or if there are little things that we can do right now to start reducing energy, and maybe you guys have something.
I think Kirk is going to come up. And Ms. Powell, if you have an example of one of the reports that we're starting to generate now about our consumption, I know Kirk might address it.
We didn't bring any examples of the reports, but when we have our principals' meeting on Monday, we are going to be introducing to them the dashboards that we've developed that they'll be reviewing quarterly with us. And we have quite a bit going on in this area. Regarding the larger question about replacing lights, I thought maybe Kirk would like to speak briefly about energy performance contracting, which is something the city's done before. I did it in a previous school district, and I think the technology has advanced enough with new light fixtures and so forth that the city is determining that it's worth doing another round of that. I don't want to speak out of turn.
Sure. Yep, and there's obviously plenty of opportunity around throughout all of our schools. Right now, we're trying to determine how we would approach an energy performance contract, and we are actively, actually discussing sort of our next steps. We've been in discussions with the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy, which is a state department that actually helps cities to go through the energy performance contract process. And right now, we are actually trying to determine just our next steps and trying to move that forward. But it is absolutely an active consideration right now. I think it's one of our best opportunities to do sort of a wholesale upgrade of all of our buildings. And wholesale is not meant to say that it's going to be just a complete change-out without any, you know, without respect to unique situations. We definitely want to go through and make sure all are comfort, all specific issues are addressed when we go through this process. But it is sort of the best way to really do a full upgrade of all of our facilities, such as going HVAC as well as lighting and other areas.
And just as I'm listening to Kirk talk, I feel like it's probably worth a mention, an energy performance contract, and if I butcher this, you correct me, but an energy performance contract is where you look at investing in a lot of upgrades for your facilities to implement more efficient technology, and the savings from that investment helps to pay for the project. And so it's this kind of somewhat uniquely structured project, and in conjunction with the city preparing for this type of a project, it is, sort of falls under that PPA, Public Private Partnership-type model, so they are looking at the enabling ordinances to allow for that. And those of you who went to Harrisonburg are familiar with that, those types of projects are a little bit different. It's not a strict low-bed environment. These are different types of capital projects, and so different vehicles are put in place to enable them. But they're really, it's exciting work. But energy performance contract, that's the gist of what that is, when we talk about undertaking another round of that. And that's a city initiative, not ours, but very exciting.
And just to note, the energy performance contract is definitely a way to do this, but if for some reason that isn't a tool that we can go through with, or something stops that process, we're actually looking to do, at least in a wholesale, go through every facility and make upgrades as we can, and try to at least keep moving us inch by inch forward in trying to improve our lighting, improve HVAC, our operations, anywhere we can make those changes, we want to do that, so.
Yes, Ms. Torres?
Thank you. So along with those things, I mean, I had done some reading, other things that other schools and campuses and cities had looked at, but specifically schools, I mean, even the next time, we're looking at replacing devices. I mean, there's different types of Chromebook devices that are Energy Star devices, looking at things like when or if we need to replace dishwashers, or vending machines, or water coolers, I mean, looking at the amount of money that they saved, and then the impact it had on the CO2. I mean, it was pretty impressive. So I'm hoping that we're looking at all of those things as things come up and need to be replaced.
Absolutely. Equipment and appliances play a big role in this, too. So water sense qualified, Energy Star qualified, we're looking at all those things, and want to try to incorporate that into future decisions for purchasing, too.
Yeah, thank you.
I also, just with respect to, I'm not sure if the board would be willing, but I think an annual report to the board regarding the energy performance, like if you're having quarterly reports to principals and with this group, that it might be a reasonable thing in the summer to kind of do end-of-year or beginning-of-year wrap-up, kind of where we've been and where we are, and what our goals are, if that's appropriate.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
I think that's something that would be, I mean, all of us need to know where we stand, and the performance, I'd like to keep you updated on that. And it's something we're actually looking into, and as long as we're sort of transparent about that, everyone knows where we are, we can collectively see how we're improving, and we'll definitely incorporate that annual report.
Ms. McKeever? Yes, Dr.
Yeah, well, that just gave me a thought, that I guess what I had wanted to say was that how proud I am of our students, echoing Mr. Wade, how proud I am of our students for really standing up, for organizing, for writing what they wanted to say, and getting up in front of us, for getting petitions signed, for really leading the way and showing us that, you know, yes, this is an important thing, but it's also connected to something a lot larger, which is climate change, and their worries about that, you know, lots of worries about that. So I'm really proud of them for the leadership that they've shown, and I'm just want to, in parentheses, say I'm also proud of our older students who have modeled leadership, including the ones sitting right down there with us, Ziana, but modeling leadership to our younger students and helping them really realize that they can do this, they can get up, and they can, you know, make things happen. So it's a long-winded way to say also that I wonder if we could find a way to share an annual report with students and make it a learning opportunity, since so many of our students are invested in this, and I think they want to know what does this mean and what's actually happening. So maybe we can find a way to do that and involve them.
So in our first meeting with Nigel, who's over at the STEM program, he was, when he started to look at the data that Kirk has and what we're going to be presenting to principals, he went exactly there with sharing that data with students as part of the engagement. So I think our vision is coming together quickly. That's going to be a central part of that effort to integrate climate concerns and the things that the students spoke about with the curriculum. So we're just ahead, a tiny step ahead of you on that, I think.
Thank you. I'm glad. That's great.
Are there any other questions or discussion around this resolution? Okay, all those in favor of the Energy and Water Performance Resolution? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the resolution has passed. Congratulations, and thank you to the students and parents. And the staff who worked hard. The next item on the agenda is the Career and Technical Education Local Plan. Mr. Henderson?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkins. Last month, staff provided information to you regarding the CTE local plan. Tonight, Superintendent recommends that board take action on the plan.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussions or motions around the CTE plan?
What is it about?
Does anybody think we could pass a plan?
I'll move its approval.
Okay. So Mr. Mickey has made a motion? Who's like the second?
I have a question.
Maybe after we finish the motion and then the last discussion?
I'll second.
Okay, so go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, okay. My question was, is the, like, remember the demographics that they identified last time, is that what is in the plan, like, to, is a plan to continue to measure those demographics?
Absolutely, yeah. Okay. Mr. Henderson, is that, that's accurate?
Yeah. It is. And we measured based on our goals and based on what we, the state provides us as benchmarks to meet our goals.
Okay. And I was wondering if we, as, or if y'all as a division could add race as something to measure, as we know that black students are underrepresented in STEM.
My understanding is that it will be measured, under the local plan.
Okay.
So is that, can you?
I don't, I don't think it is.
Yeah.
The state does not use that as a part of a quality indicator. It uses, it looks at non, for example, women in a program that's not expected for women to be in, or for male to be in a program that's not expected for male to be in. But other than that, it does not. But that's not, that's something locally we could do.
Right. That's my question.
Provide guidance.
Yes, Dr. Atkins.
I'll also say some of the demographics that we get is after the student has graduated. So we probably, we may be able to add a question on for ethnicity, making it optional. Of course, we could go back in our records and find that, but as we survey them, we could add that on as an option.
Does the, I think it's a great idea, and I'm sorry that we aren't already doing that, so thank you for bringing that up. Is there anybody else?
But I go back, and it would, if we collect it, because personal finance is part of CTE, everybody takes it. So it would not, it would skew the collection of race, because everybody takes personal finance. So we'd have to look at specific programs to look at.
I think we could use our K-Tech data.
We could.
That would be one area in which we could look at.
We could do that.
But at the high school, it's now a requirement, so it would include everyone.
Okay. Yep.
Can I answer your question?
Yes.
So to the extent that we have a report on this in the future, we'd love the individual programs, I think, to the extent that it's appropriate, it's not skewing the results to have a racial breakdown.
Okay.
Is that accurate? Is that what the board would like to see?
If we can do that, yes. I think, sure.
If we can do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Have we passed this?
No, you need to pass it.
Okay, any other questions?
Do you have a motion on the floor, and you're in discussion, so now you can?
Any other questions or discussion items?
You can vote on it.
Okay. I don't think, so is there, I'm going to go ahead and call to question, and to the extent, all those in favor of the resolution, of the local plan?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The local plan is passed.
Thank you.
It's a good thing. Then we can get our money.
Okay, so in the wrap-up, that would be a good time to indicate how we would like that report to rereflect the demographic breakdown.
Yes.
There you go.
So now we're at discussion items, the school program of study, Mr. Henderson. Hi, Dr. Hastings.
Hello. I'll let you introduce me anytime.
You don't need to.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkins. Tonight, well, actually, last month, we, actually, several months ago, we approved the 2019-2020 Program of Study. Tonight, we would like to address additions to the 2019-2020 Program of Study regarding Walker School. Dr. Hastings is here to share with you information on those additions, and for information, we can vote on it next month.
Thank you. Dr. Hastings?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mr. Bryan, happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
My four-year-old's birthday is on Saturday, so some kindred spirit, that's wonderful. Good evening.
There's a lot of Aries in our mix.
You can tell.
I come before you as the principal of Walker, but I think it bears relevance in this conversation. I'm also a former sixth-grade Spanish teacher. I have some experience in this as a classroom teacher and now as a school administrator. When I joined the team at Walker, it was a real privilege to have community feedback about challenges that the community saw going on at Walker, and places that were doing a really good job at Walker. Also, through the strategic plan process, we got a lot of community feedback about how Walker might grow and update. And then over the last school year, you've probably heard about our participatory budgeting project, in which we engaged all of our sixth-grade students in some analysis of how we could make Walker a better school. Two things came out in all of those, and as you may not be surprised, they're counter to one another. One of those is, please protect the programs of greatest value in our school division, and you know what those are: fine arts, academics, iSTEM, foreign language. But they also said, please give our students more options at Walker, in a school that currently has one elective option. And so as we've been working on our master schedule and our courses for next year, this has been a growing and learning process. It's been a pleasure to talk to Dr. Ogden in this process and get some real perspective on where we are right now and how we can grow and improve. I'm really happy about what we're proposing to you tonight, and while I'm the person speaking, this has been a big team effort. I'm going to begin with sort of the nitty-gritty, which may not be where we think we would begin, but I want to get this part maybe out of the way. This is the specific course information about two new classes to be offered at Walker next year as electives. One is called Pre-Engineering I, would be offered to fifth graders, and one is called Pre-Engineering II, it would be offered to sixth graders. You'll notice that the course descriptions are pretty similar. These are exploratory courses. That is to say, that we will not be developing biomedical engineers or computer scientists out of this program. What I'm hoping that we will do is ignite the fire inside many of our students who thrive within STEM classes through an elective process. As I've often said, and perhaps you've heard me say, all of our students need something to which to belong while they're at Walker. And while I love our students and their orchestra shirts, while I love our students and the STEM activities, I need every child to have something that makes them want to come to school, and I believe electives are one of the ways that we light a fire within our I think probably more than those technical details are the rationale impact. So we started with a very clear focus on maintaining access for all students to the current programs that we offer. Right now, this proposal is that we would continue fine arts for every child at Walker. We would continue for those students who are interested in taking Spanish, either as an elective course or for high school credit, that they still have the opportunity to do that. However, currently in the sixth grade at Walker, every single student in sixth grade began the year in our Spanish program. Today, 60% of sixth graders remain in Spanish, which is another way of saying that nearly 40% of our sixth grade has opted out of world language instruction at Walker. We know that we have a population of students and families at Walker who are looking for that thing, that elective option. I've discussed a little bit about our community feedback. One thing I've heard loud and clear is that our students want more choice. I hear it from our students on a day-to-day basis. I heard it from our students when we made visits to every fourth-grade classroom within our school division, and I hear it from our parents as we talk about requests for more things, more wonderful ways that our students can learn in our school. Right now, as I've told you, every student at Walker has one elective option, one 46-minute period in their day, every other day, to do something other than core education. This is an opportunity to give a child every single day, an opportunity to get into an exploratory elective program that allows them to do something other than literacy and numeracy, something other than reading, math, science, and social studies, as a way to ignite the fire inside of our students. Now, we did not explore a litany of elective options. In this division, fortunate to have Dr. Shields and his expertise, we know we have an amazing program here in the Signal Lab, we know that Beaufort has the Alpha Lab, and at Walker, we have the Delta Lab, but that iSTEM program is an integrated program within our science and math classes, and not an everyday experience to experience STEM. When we surveyed our students about those topics in which they might be interested, there was a significantly large response for students who are interested in taking a STEM-like course, and conveniently, we have expertise in this division to be able to offer that kind of elective. Finally, and I've talked about this a few times, I'm telling you as the principal of 658 students, that the program of studies as it stands right now, while wonderful, is not meeting the needs of every one of the children within my care, and I need other opportunities to light my children absolutely on fire for learning. And we believe that a STEM class, an option to take two electives, is the best way that we can do that moving forward. This next slide is fairly technical, and I'm sorry, but as you know, sometimes we've got to get it all on one page. So we start at the top in the yellow section, and the current, the current state of affairs at Walker is this: every student selects one elective. Those electives come from our fine arts program. Our fine arts program includes art, band, Our fine arts program includes art, band, general music, which is a morphing of vocal music, and some, I believe, Mr. Bryant, they're called orf instruments, is that correct? And orf instruments, and orchestra. And those programs thrive, and I expect those student, those programs to continue to thrive. By now, every student in Walker in the fifth grade has Spanish on an every-other-day schedule for thirty minutes every other day, and every student in sixth grade has it for forty-six minutes every other day, with the option of completing the course for high school credit for Spanish I. As we're looking at, looking forward at language, we might think about that as an honors option course, where a student is sitting in a normal Spanish sixth class, a non-high school credit class, but they have the option to work for a higher level of mastery and demonstrate mastery for high school credit. Finally, as you know, all of our students are part of the iSTEM program. The proposal for next year is in blue. Students would select two electives. First, because we value the fine arts in this division, every child would be required to continue to take one fine arts elective. Second, a child could continue, excuse me, a child could elect to do one of the following three options. A student could select a second fine arts elective. We have a lot of students, right now, our math teacher, excuse me, our art teacher teaches two hundred and seventy-six children, and if I had more seats in that room, we'd have two hundred and eighty-six, two hundred and ninety-six. And there are children who are absolutely waiting in line to get into Ms. Pagni's classroom every day because she's an exceptional teacher, and I expect that some students may say, I wanna do orchestra and art. And I'll tell you that I'm okay with that. However, some of our students are going to say, I wanna take Spanish. In fact, I think a large number of our children are gonna say, I want to continue Spanish, because those children and their families understand the value of getting a head start, but it is a head start on world language instruction, so that they can be ahead of the game by the time they get to high school. Next year at Walker, the proposal would be that students in fifth grade could continue to take Spanish V, as they do now, except it would be an increase to a more, the new master schedule format would allow them to take a few more minutes of instruction on an every-other-day basis, and sixth graders would continue to complete the program as they do now, in a Spanish VI classroom, with the option of demonstrating mastery of Spanish I for high school credit. All students would continue to have the iSTEM program. However, fifth-grade students may select to be in Pre-Engineering I as an elective, sixth-grade students may select to be in Pre-Engineering II as an elective. In both the cases of Spanish and Pre-Engineering, taking it or not taking it in fifth grade neither requires nor precludes a student from enrolling in the subsequent course in the sixth grade. This is a change in perspective. This is allowing elective courses at Walker to be exploratory in nature, which is to say, I tried it out, I liked it, I wanna keep doing it, or I tried it out, not for me, I'm ready to try something else. At the bottom, you'll see a student interest survey that we gave out in the middle of the year. And Dr. Ogden, I agree with Dr. Ogden's comment about some of this is, is a bit of an unfair choice. Right now at Walker, Spanish comes out of math. It's a true statement, and many of our students who are struggling in math may prefer to get extra math instruction. Actually, I don't know how many of you know a lot of ten, eleven, and twelve-year-olds. Most of them are not asking me for extra math class. However, I think it's, it, what I, what, in, this sort of must be taken within the context of the current experience of students at Walker. So we know that based on, I, I can surmise based on these numbers that fine arts will continue to be strong. I can surmise based on these numbers that I would have enough enrollment to offer a STEM class, be it in a full-time or a part-time capacity, and I expect that Spanish will continue. We have some dynamite Spanish teachers at Walker. When I'm in our Spanish classrooms, our students love it. When I'm in our Spanish classrooms, they're conjugating irregular verbs, there's great work going on in Spanish. But not all of our students are interested in that. As somebody who is a language arts teacher, as someone who is a Spanish teacher, I understand and appreciate the liberal arts. But as someone who is also an elective teacher, I taught home ec for a little while, it was a blast. As somebody who's an elective teacher, as the director of an elective-based center, and as the principal at Walker, I can tell you that we have a large number of students who are looking for another elective option. Finally, if you recall, at, at the last board meeting during which we spoke, I requested that you remove Spanish I from the Program of Study for Walker. After communicating with parents and family members and considering that, um, the honors option program as we have moving forward, I think we can include Spanish I again and maintain the current program, where sixth graders would be able to complete Spanish I for high school credit, should they so choose. The reason why I'm bringing this back to you is because we took it out, and now we need to put it back in.
Yeah.
I've been talking a lot. That was my last slide.
Okay, great, thank you, Dr. Hastings.
Thank you.
Yes, who would like to start?
Mr. Mickey?
So if you, uh...
I need your mic to be on.
How quickly they forget.
So I'm sure you've thought of this, but if you do, uh, an engineering, two years, potentially two years of engineering at Walker, um, those kids are gonna be more advanced by the time they get to Beaufort, and so there, seems like there needs to be changes at Beaufort.
Certainly.
And at the same thing with Spanish, that if you have kids who currently, who don't take Spanish in either year, and then they land at, at Beuford, that there might be some need is for changes to that program at Beuford.
So the Spanish I changes are less consequential in that we currently have students who are leaving Walker with, with some, a lot, or no Spanish instruction and arriving at Beuford. So students are arriving at Beuford, um, at, at level zero all the way up to ready for Spanish II. The, the STEM question is, is probably more of a concern, however, keep in mind, these are exploratory courses. So as exploratory courses, it's about giving students exposure to what's going on in those courses. There is mastery of tools, there is learning of systems, but this isn't in a sort of plodding path to obtain credit to sort of eat away at the requirements in high school. This is an opportunity to just give exposure, and certainly, some of our students may end up in Beuford in the alpha lab, ready, with a higher degree of readiness, and, and that is something that Beuford will have to consider. But these are conversations that are going on now between Walker, Beuford, and CHS about an alignment, about continued alignment of curriculum.
Because the issue would be some students, some students are that advanced and some won't, so some will have taken two years of engineering and some won't, and so you kinda need to continue to meet the higher needs, but also...
They're exploratory, is what he's saying, is that they're not necessarily building on one another.
I get that.
Yeah.
But, but still, you're gonna have some kids that are more advanced in engineering than the other ones, and so it's not that everybody's gonna be going, doing two years, and so you can goose up the, all the classes, but that, you're gonna need to meet different levels at, at Spanish and, I mean, in engineering.
Dr. Atkins has something to say. Mr. Mickey, I think you make a good point. Uh, what we have currently is that we have, um, our goal for our engineering program was to, at Beuford, offer an exploratory program in the seventh grade, um, at the seventh grade level, in preparation for the students being ready to take Engineering I at the eighth grade level. And we wanted a program that would, um, speak to the needs of a diverse group of students. And although we have some diversity in the engineering program at eighth grade, as we built the program, we realized that there are some prerequisites and prerequisite exploratory experiences that would benefit all of our students to have in preparation for going to Beuford and being ready to go into an engineering program. Currently, we have, um, some black students, some brown students in the engineering program, but we'd like to build that. And we see one of the ways that we can build those opportunities for our students is to offer this option at Walker and encourage a very diverse group of students to be a part of this experience, to give them the foundation that's necessary in order to be able to perform well in Engineering I at eighth grade.
I, I might add, if I may, it, it may be a perspective shift, I'm not suggesting you need to shift your perspective, Mr. Mickey, but, um, that we don't do a lot of learning for the sake of learning, learning for the sake of joy, learning for the sake of experience. We often think about, if I do this, then I do that, then I do that, then I do that, and this is an opportunity for, for kids just to, like, we don't have to always be forward-thinking as we're thinking about our experiences. This is a time to just roll up our sleeves and get involved in the content and find out, is this a place where I can be me as a learner? And, and while, yeah, it may put a child ahead of another child when we get to the next level, it's not about a race, it's about building expertise so that our students can be successful as they pursue their own educational priorities.
One of the beauties of this is that, um, Dr. Shields actually developed the program at the high school and worked with Brendan Martin at Beuford to design the program at Beuford. So knowing that he's going to be a part of the design of the, uh, Pre-Engineering I and II gives us a great deal of con, uh, confidence in the continuity of the program and the understanding what we want. It, it would be very much like the Bacon program, very hands-on, very interactive and engaging for our students.
So, you know, it sounds like it'll be a very attractive program. What if all the students choose that? Do you have space for...
Um, we could, yes, based on current enrollment, we're, and current staffing, we can make, we can make STEM or Spanish, or based on these electives, would, we can make all of those work.
And where is it gonna be, in the library space?
It's a great question. I don't know yet. I, I wanted to wait until the course was approved before we started moving rooms around. My suspicion is that we would put it in the place that's best equipped, and our delta lab is a place that isn't as utilized as some of our all-day, every-day classrooms. Mr. Chamberlain may not want to hear me say that out loud, but, um, I'm not sure what the place will be yet.
And what additional equipment do we need? Do we need 3D printers and...
We're gonna be, we have, we're, we're in good stead for that right now. I mean, I'm sure as we build the program and we're with Dr. Shields, in year one, we'll be finding out things that we just don't know, but the reality is, we, we, we have a, a very good iSTEM program, uh, and we have a very good battery of, of equipment and tools and resources.
Can you tell us...
Mr. Mickey?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Then you're gonna be done with me, don't you? That's a good thing. What the, uh, can you describe the iSTEM? What, what is the iSTEM program now? How much do the kids get of that during the week?
So iSTEM's integrated into our science and math classes predominantly, that's what you might expect. Um, and it happens on a rotation basis, um, and it, to some degree varies. We have a baseline of the amount of time that they get, and it's not time-dependent so much as it is project-dependent. But then, we have other classes, we have language arts classes, we have Virginia Studies classes, history classes, that also wanna think about how STEM interacts with their world, and they work on interdisciplinary projects. I don't know the number of minutes that they get, off the top of the head, and I, I don't, I don't know that we would even be able to boil it down.
Okay, Ms. Bryant?
All right. Um, my question is mainly about, uh, high school credits. Because as a student, looking at the path, can we go back to that slide with the...
This one?
Yes. So, I, like, I loved engineering, it was great, um, I did it in eighth grade and then here at the high school, but how do we make sure that students who do choose that engineering class can also come out of Walker with a high school credit, right? Because like, if you can do Spanish, like, me as a student who's now a senior, I want the high school credit. Like, I don't, I don't care about, you know, exploring, because when I get to high school, my electives are so limited, so where I have to get as many as I can, like, before I get to high school. So for me, I would of course choose Spanish, that route, because I can get the high school credit. So how can we make sure that our sixth graders still have that option in engineering?
So from a program design standpoint, in year one, we're thinking that our current fourth graders and our current fifth graders don't have any experience with a Pre-Engineering elective.
Okay.
So the reality is that next year, both fifth graders and sixth graders would likely be in a pretty similar class, because we'd be in the year one of implementation, all, it's new to all of our students, and as a result, we'd be developing probably the same experience with some greater depth based on what they're learning in sixth-grade math and science, but, um, in year one, I don't, I don't expect that we would have anything available for high school credit. Um, in year two, however, I think that we, we would be, begin exploring that. But developing both years of curriculum concurrently doesn't make a, from an effort standpoint, doesn't make a whole ton of sense. We wanna know what the standards are and what the outcomes are for that year-two program, but develop, fleshing those out entirely in year one doesn't make a, may not be the best usage of our effort, because we won't have anybody in that class in the first year.
Right, yeah. I just was thinking as far as like, um, I mean, I got a high school credit with doing a half, one semester and then one full year.
Right.
So I did second semester, eighth grade, and then ninth grade or something like that, and had the high school credit. So I'm just thinking that how could we make that possible for sixth graders? Because I mean, intro to engineering, you just do Arduino, like, and I, like, I mean, it's not, unless it's changed since I've done it, but like, we just, we build stuff and then we do Arduino, and then you get the high school credit, so...
You're actually kind of opening a part of my mind right now.
Oh, sorry.
I hadn't thought about, in year one of us considering this for high school credit, but it's, it's certainly a worthwhile conversation. Without the curriculum fully defined at this point, um, I think, as we work with Dr. Shields and Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Brendan, Dr. Martin, um, and then our teacher, Mr. Chamberlain, I think we'll get some better clarity on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin.
Mr. Bryant.
Mr. Martin.
Doctor.
Alrighty birthday person, wants us to know he's here.
Um, I have a question, uh, a question about the Spanish I. You asked to reinstate, to reinstate that course. Could you describe to me what that, what the class is going to look like in regards to diversity?
I, I don't know today. I know that I go into our, I, I don't know what it'll look like next year, because we haven't asked our students what courses they'd wanna take. I know that right now, I go into our classrooms, and even with forty percent of our sixth grade no longer taking the classes, they're actually still quite diverse. We don't know yet how many of our students will obtain, uh, Spanish I for high school credit this year. It's one of those things, kind of like an AP class, we don't know who passes the test until they take the test. Based on enrollment this year, and, and in a year different than previous years, in which we allowed every single sixth grader to have that experience, I expect that the numbers will be higher. Um, I, I don't have an empirical figure for you today. I would like to continue that format moving forward next year. I will not know until we start getting student course requests as to diversity figures in any of our electives, but it's something that we keep front and center. The, the goal here is to give all students access to the thing that makes them want to be at school. And frankly, I think that by offering additional electives, it gives our students a chance, all of our students, to find that thing that works for them.
So in developing this course, have, do you already have a curriculum in terms of high school? I guess I'm putting on my counseling that, I'm trying to visualize sixth graders taking a Spanish I course for high school credit. Would that be the same curriculum that they're using here for Spanish I?
So, yeah, it is. Well, it's a little bit modified just from a, from the fact that our, let's go back up. When we develop, when the videoe develops courses, they develop those within the context of the other courses that are offered, right? So if we develop a high school class, when that curriculum is developed, it's developed with the assumption that students are in high school. So we make some adjustments to make it perhaps more relevant to sixth graders, however, the assessments, the mastery levels that are expected at the conclusion of the course are the same. So what we're, what we're seeing this year at Walker is that the students all get first instruction, but in many cases, because even though we don't have seat time requirements anymore, historically, high school courses were built on a one-hundred-and-forty-hour framework. At Walker, students get sixty-nine hours of instruction in Spanish, so they get about half of their instruction happens in the classroom, and the other half happens with the support of the teacher, but very much independently. And so, oh, I lost my train of thought. Did I answer your question? Or am I missing a piece? I'm sorry, Mr. Bryant, I kind of lost it.
I'm still, I guess I'm not, I'm not against adding Spanish as an option, but, um, I just, I'm just, I just wanna make sure that if it is added as an option, that it will be a diverse pool of students taking this course, or given that opportunity to take Spanish, um, and also, um, that if it's going to be taught as a high school course, that it be rigorous, just, you know...
Mr. Bryant, at, um, the Spanish I has been a part of the, uh, Walker prior to this. He only recommended that we take it out for next year, but it has been a part of Walker for a number of years, that they earned, uh, high school credit in the special, uh, Spanish I class at Walker. So we're restoring it instead of just putting it in as a brand-new course, and we've worked with the Spanish teachers at Walker, Spanish teachers at Beuford over the years, in developing the model that we have in place. Although we've tweaked that model several times, trying to find the best balance and where to offer those crap, classes, the Spanish I class has been offered previously at Walker at sixth grade.
Yeah. Um, Dr. Craft?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I would like to, to make sure that I am understanding, sort of the bigger picture of this issue, what you're hearing from students, and what we're hearing from parents, and how they fit together. And so I think what, what you're saying, basically, is that students are excited about their fine arts opportunities, and they're excited about their, the STEM opportunities, and that they're less excited about Spanish. Is that accurate? Based on the percentages that?
I don't think the student surveys, that's just a one-time glimpse in time about what our students were thinking on that day. We have a, we have a lot of students, sixty percent of our, of our sixth grade is still in Spanish and is thriving in the Spanish program. So we have a large number of students who are currently enjoying Spanish. Their teachers are great. They love, you can see them as interacting in the classes. I'm in those classes all the time. And what's going on in there is students loving Spanish class, so we have that group.
Okay.
We'll tell you that I've visited, I went to, I missed Greenbrier, because one of my children was homesick, but I was, went to every single other fourth grade class in the city. And I got the same two questions, first and second, from every single class. Question number one was, do I get to bring my Chromebook home? And question number two was, are we taking Spanish next year?
Really? Okay. So they're, they're engaged in it, right?
Nope. I should have worded that differently. Do we have to take Spanish next year?
Do we have, oh, oh, really? Do we have to take Spanish? Well, we're hearing a lot from parents who are very, very passionate about making sure that their kids have Spanish as part of their development, their academic development. And so, you know, they're concerned, you know, about anything that would diminish the, you know, the opportunities there.
So this plan, as it stands, would allow for any, any student or family who's interested in taking Spanish to continue taking Spanish.
They can do it.
And they would continue to get STEM enrichment through the iSTEM program.
Okay.
I will say that although they're not represented in communications that have come to me recently, I think with sixty percent of our sixth grade families remaining in the Spanish program, to a certain extent, a large number of our sixth grade families have voted with their feet, so to speak, about not remaining in the program.
Right.
I thought it was required, is my question. You said it was a required class, so it's very confusing to me that children have been opting out.
Students have been opting out.
So how is that possible?
Students and parents come, and we evaluate this on a case-by-case basis, and they say, do I, do I want to stay in this class, or would I, would I like to get additional math instruction? Because Spanish currently comes out of our math class.
Yeah.
The way this program was designed this year was that students, it's a fluid program, and students were polled for math intervention, and many of our students have said, I really need to work on math.
Yeah.
And, and actually, most surprisingly, is I think a large number of those students have come out of our students in the accelerated math program, who have said, I've made a conscious decision to be in an advanced math pathway, and I'm missing out on math time in order to go to Spanish, and while Spanish is important, I'd rather be in math. Unfortunately, when we have a limited number of minutes and a limited amount of resources, at some point, people end up having to make choices, and this is about giving people more choices.
Is, will that continue? Will Spanish continue to be pull-out for math? No?
I am.
Okay. So that should remove that problem.
Yes.
Okay. And is there anything, you're saying that the actual quality of the Spanish program is really great and engaging the students. Is there anything that could be done or should be done to tweak that?
I hesitate to make much commentary on the quality of the Spanish program, K4. Our students come to us, some of them really enthused about Spanish, and we have a range of speakers from can't speak to can speak and everything in between. We're still doing Spanish one. And so, Spanish one, at the end of the day, is still numbers and colors and months and greetings. And so, none of my children, unless they're native speakers, are coming and are able to speak to me in Spanish. We don't have those kind of conversations. But I think they're, I think they're making growth. And what's important, I think, to keep in mind from our, from our current elementary Spanish program is, I think it's as much about culture and community as it is about language and written and verbal communication.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I would like to make sure that everybody else has an opportunity to, okay. Ms. Torres? Are you deferring to Ms. Bryant? Okay. I was just curious, historically, and I'm not sure if you have this, but out of the sixty percent that remain in, in the Spanish one, what is the pass rate, or how many get that credit, and what, historically?
So I don't have the historical data for our current group. What I can tell you is that since we started the program in thirteen fourteen, we've awarded just over five hundred high school credits in Spanish one. However, as we look back at that program over the years, there has not been a consistent assessment at the end of the course by which students demonstrate mastery of Spanish one. So if I put on sort of a, a school accreditation hat, we would say that any student who completes a class, every student who completes Spanish one, Mechatronics one, Algebra III, they all should be going over the same bar to demonstrate mastery of that course. Historically, at Walker, that has not always been the case. And so, students have earned Spanish one credit, probably through grade instruction. However, the assessment that they took at the end of that class was not the assessment that's taken in Spanish one at the high school.
And Ms., uh? Dr. Hastings, this year, they will take an assessment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that all the questions you have? Mr. Perry? Uh, Ms. Perry, I'll get to you.
No.
Sorry.
Let them go.
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, I don't, I just don't have too much to add. I just think that this is a, a wonderful compromise. It's really some tough decisions that have to be made, whether at the school level, where you, you know, moving around schedules, and at home, because the parents of my mentees that I talk with, they, you know, I think that they're kind of neutral about foreign language. It's not that they don't like it, but their parents felt that they wanted more time to get help in math and reading. And so they just had to make a decision, just like you're making with the schedules. I think we have to meet our students where they are, and we have to make some tough decisions. And I think that what you're proposing is a great compromise. We, you know, we, after next year, we may look at it and see some things we have to change again, and we, we may make those, may make some changes. But I, I'm happy that we can take the comments that we've had over the last week or so, and try to reach a compromise, because I, I've been in this for a long time. I know that a lot of times, we hear from, we don't hear from, we're just hearing one side when we get letters and things. I know that there's other sides that we, we don't hear. We just can't judge and rule based on just what we get through the email. We have to, we have to take everything into consideration.
Ms. Perry?
Um, Dr. Hastings, I would like to say thank you for understanding the word compromise, but more importantly, as an administrator of students, thank you for allowing our students to have choices and options. And thank you for having the vision to understand that we all learn differently. We all come to the table with different, different backgrounds, different cultures, and that you want everyone of your six-hundred-and-fifty-eight students to feel vested in Walker Upper Elementary School. And I'm faced right now with coming up with some choices and options that I'm calling electives, and I don't have six-hundred-and-fifty-eight students, but I want them all to be vested in upward bound, and to hear that you are willing to take that on, because you're the one that's steering the ship, and you're willing to ensure that every child, every child in that building is proud of being a Walker student. Means more to me and more to those students than any discussions we're going to have this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Bryant?
Beautiful. So, this is a little bit about the engineering program idea, but you said, like, almost forty percent of students are opting out of a required class, and so I feel like there needs to be some type of examining of the process of opting out of things, and, and getting to create your own little schedule, because I feel like that's how we get the inequity that we have now. When people can say, oh, I don't want to take this, I want to get an extra math, that's how we get, like, math geniuses in ninth grade, and then students are taking AP, 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 triple AP, AP to the fourth. So I feel like we need to really think about how our students who aren't as, I guess, like, well-versed in our program of study, how we can get those parents involved to know that, oh, your child can opt out, opt out of a required course. Like, I've never heard of such before, but I think that, that brings back to the point of the program of study, that we need to do a little bit better with making sure that parents are absolutely aware of the longer trajectory of what classes look like in the coming years when they're selecting.
I agree. I think that's a very fair comment. I think in the, in the updated schedule, the opting-out process wouldn't exist, because the Spanish program currently comes out of a math class. Students have a place to go. However, in an, in an updated schedule, if, if they said, I don't want my elective, I'd, I don't have another class for them to go to. But I, I think that's a spot-on comment. Thank you.
One, Ms. McKeever, one of the, what we're trying to strike in offering the two electives, the way the classes will be structured, we will have dedicated time for Spanish and dedicated time for our pre-engineering class. And Spanish will not be a part of math or connected with any other course. It will be a standalone. And I think that's one of the balances we're trying to strike here, where it's standalone, and it's not married with another subject area. And I think that's incredibly important. So that will address your comment, and your concern, that it will not be opting out. It's a standalone.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess the concern I have is multi-layered. But first, you did mention, like, because we value fine arts, we're going to continue to require fine arts. And I would just like to step back and say, we value foreign language as well, because we know that the evidence supports that foreign language, as early as possible, supports all sorts of growth academically and personally for children. And I just think the evidence is just so clear on that. And so I, when I became a school board member in two thousand twelve, it was, it was, became very clear to me that Spanish is a value, that here in our division, we value foreign language. And I have fought for the past seven years to improve our Spanish program, to make it accessible and engaging and important, because I saw how difficult it was for our students to really learn how, learn Spanish, and learn it in a meaningful way, start, you know, the way we, the way we have created the program. I, again, I've had two children go through this program. I have a current child in the program in second grade, so I, I feel like I can speak from, of experience. I have no problems with pre-engineering class. I think it's great. I love, I love eighty percent of what you're saying. And I fully support the program of study change with respect to adding, of course, the Spanish one, but also with the pre-engineering, and even the choice. But I think it is a false choice, like Dr. Adkin said. And I think we have to do a better job of creating curriculum in our foreign language program that supports all of our children, and engages them in a way that says, yes, I want to continue to pursue foreign language, because it's such an important part of being a citizen in our global community. I, I just don't think it's okay to step back from that commitment that we made a decade ago to Spanish. And so, while I'm comfortable with Spanish not being required, I think, so that children can have these choices, I think we need to do a better job with foreign language, so that children, so it won't be a false choice that we've set up. Like, you have this fun option of going to the engineering lab, look at all these great computer screens, where like, oh, let's diagram a sentence and conjugate verbs, like, and honestly, I think it will create further inequities in our division, rather than support equity. Now, that's my opinion. That is not my, that is not me as chair. That's just my personal opinion. I think we need to do a better job in our foreign language program, and the evidence supports that the earlier and stronger programs that you have with foreign language, the better students are overall in, in their literacy and numeracy. Just support them, just like acad, just like our fine arts program does. So, to that end, I would really request two things. One is that we split Spanish one, and we stop saying Spanish one. It's, frankly, it's not about a high school credit to me. It is about learning a foreign language and learning how to be a global citizen. And I feel like the high school credit is this kind of, I would like a Spanish exploratory class. Like, what does it mean to be a global citizen and learn a foreign language? So, but I would like, if, since we're not there yet as a division, I think a, splitting the Spanish one class into fifth and sixth grade, it sounds like that's what we're doing with the pre-engineering, we could do that very easily, because Spanish five is superfluous. We all know that. It's superfluous. It is not someplace where meaningful learning is happening that supports children going into Spanish one, because so many kids are opting out of Spanish one. If it was supportive, then they wouldn't opt out. So, split the Spanish one in, so that you don't have to do half of your time independently. That is, how can you say and expect that? That's absolutely undevelopementally appropriate, or it's developmentally inappropriate for children in sixth grade to be doing half of their high school class independently. And it's just a lot to ask for our students. So if we split that up in their class, rather than outside of class, maybe they get, A, the high school credit, maybe they actually get the, the bug of learning foreign language and what it means to be a global citizen, and then maybe also, they learn more about their own language. And it's just, it, it just boggles my mind that we are creating a whole other program when we can just really support this program. And I'm, you know, I support your efforts to engage more children in education, and thank you for your efforts to do that. I just think it's a false choice, and I would love to see additional foreign language curriculum examination. So that is where I want to emphasize, is that what we're, is to change Spanish five, and, and, and then, then we can work on the K, or the first through fourth grade, because that is not engaging our children either as well as it can be. So, that's all I have to say. That was all me personally, not as a representative, not as chair. Yes, Mr. McKeever?
Yeah, so I, I, you know, it's hard to say having more choices is, is a worse thing, and so, you know, I think it makes sense to have more choices. And you're still offering the same options for, for kids to, to take Spanish. So I, I get all that, and, and limited time, and, and compromise, and all that. It all makes sense. But I, it is my recollection that, that the idea of, of doing Spanish in, in Walker, part of it was to help kids who've struggled to get advanced diplomas, get advanced diplomas. And I don't know whether that's panned out. Maybe it hasn't panned out, but if, I mean, that was a big part of the idea, was that we wanted to push kids forward who don't get advanced diplomas, so that they have a better chance to get advanced diplomas. And it seems like another part of it was that kids weren't having, because of the need for remediation at Buford, they weren't having a choice of having electives at Buford. And so that this was a way to help free kids up to have elective at Bufords, and now we're, maybe they're going to have fewer electives at, at Buford, because they won't have had Spanish at Walker. I, it, it feels like, I, I support this, and, and I'm going to vote for it. I, I think because of the compromise thing, and, and more choices are good, but I do feel like that that Spanish program, that this is kind of being driven not by the Spanish teachers, or have gotten together and designed what's best for, for the kids to learn Spanish, but it's because of this other good, very good reasons of, of keeping kids engaged, and, and we have such a strong engineering program, and STEM is so very important to careers and that kind of thing, and, and, and we ought to continue to push that, and all good. But it, I do feel like that maybe, assuming we go down this, this path, that the Spanish team needs to get back together and to reevaluate what we're doing and the best way to do it, and whether it's what Ms. McKeever suggests, or, or something else, or whether we need to really move towards an immersion program in elementary schools or, or elsewhere, but it seems like that team ought to get back together and, and rethink about how to best teach Spanish and move kids forward and that. So, anyway.
Yes, Dr.?
I, I would agree with you. I think one of, one of the constraints that, since we have implemented our Spanish program, our world language program, we originally implemented it starting at kindergarten. And of course, during the downturn of the economy, we pulled back from kindergarten, and, and it starts at first grade. But one of the constraints that we have worked with in the elementary schools and at Walker is our school hours. We have implemented the Spanish program in our elementary school and at Walker with the same school hours that we had prior to putting the Spanish program in. We had
Same number of hours.
Same number of hours. The same number of school hours.
Right.
And there was a discussion when we were putting the program in about extending our school hours. And we made the decision not to extend the school hours and to put the program in, so we integrated the program with our core areas. So the Spanish teachers at the elementary school, they do a push-in model at the elementary school. At Walker, we have had hybrid models since the inception of our Spanish program. We've had hybrid models at the, at fifth and sixth. We've had hybrid models at the, at fifth and sixth grade. Since we've started the program and Spanish one, I believe our first year, all students took Spanish one at the sixth grade level, as we moved it up. Second year, we found out that that was not the best model, so then we went to the hybrid model. And our Spanish teachers came back together and tweaked that. And I know Ms. McKeever helped us and gave us lots of feedback on that model, and we've ended up with the model that we have currently. We are seeing more students go into Buford taking Spanish. I'm not sure that we see more diverse students taking Spanish at the middle school level. Would remind everyone that when students get to seventh grade, they do have an option. What we're doing is starting that option earlier. We are not stepping away from our commitment to world languages. We think it's very important, and I would love to come back to the board and have a discussion about how do we make our elementary program more robust. An immersion program would be ideal in our school division, and having a dedicated time for Spanish in the elementary schools would be certainly a benefit to our students. So that would be, I'd love to have that discussion next year, as we're developing schedules, about the Spanish program. But we are committed to world language, and we are committed to the development of our students. We do know the importance and the value of world language, but also, we know the value of choice for our students and hooking all of our students.
If I could just add one thing, I'm, I'm not coming to you with any suggestion that the Spanish program, as it sits now, is not of quality, and I don't want my students to do that anymore. What I'm suggesting to you is that I have a group of students in my building that we need to reach in a different way.
Yeah.
And I think STEM is the opportunity to reach those students.
Yeah.
And to have two quality options for children to really move into secondary education, to me, is a game changer for the success of Walker moving forward.
Right.
Understood.
Yes, Dr. Krach?
Yeah, I, I support these changes that you're making, and I really appreciate the hard thought that's gone into this process. I know it hasn't been easy. And I also appreciate the discussion that we're having, and, you know, it's, I wasn't on the board, you know, when some of these things came up before, and I'm, I'm thinking that maybe this is the time, because we're, you know, we have our equity lens now more, you know, out front, so maybe we do need to take the foreign language program through that lens and try to understand, maybe, why that program is not as diverse as we would like, you know? Is there a reason why some students aren't wanting to do that, you know? Can we, can we understand this better? So, you know, I would like to do that. I would like that process to happen as part of our broader equity efforts. But I, I think this is a really good compromise, and I, I support it.
Now, are there any other comments? My understanding is that this is an information and action item, so I'm sure Dr. Hastings would like to have some clarity moving forward, so his students can make choices. So, I'd, accept any motions?
I move that we approve the recommended course additions to the Walker Program of Studies.
Second.
To the extent that we have an examination of our world languages program before Buford, for example, I would like to include, I don't want to necessarily include that in this Program of Study resolution, but I want to ensure that it happens. So I'm not sure the best vehicle for that.
And we'll add it to our follow-up, and we will, we have board retreat coming up.
We can talk about it.
Might be a good time to discuss it.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Hastings? All of those in favor of the changes to the Program of Study? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Hastings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hastings.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, Dr. Atkins is gonna give us an update on the Equity Committee.
Thank you. It, it's a pleasure to ask Beth Chuck to come up to the podium to give us an overview of where we are now on our Equity Committee, and to also include in that presentation some of the areas in which the Black Student Union has raised. Beth Chuck will cover those in the presentation also. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. So yes, I'm here to give an update, I'm just gonna slip through. The first thing I want to do, I don't think we've ever named the members of the Equity Committee, and so I'm not gonna read these names person by person, but you'll find that they represent our teachers, they represent our administrators, they represent the board, city employees, community members from various nonprofits who intersect with our students, teachers, and you'll also find that they, in many cases, are folks who wear multiple hats. They are alum who also are employees, they are alumni who are also parents, or whatever, whatever it might be. And we wanted that multiple perspective, so that people could bring different strands of thought to this work. There are four work teams, and they're listed there. Institutional structures covers things along the lines of, how do we work to promote diversity within classrooms? How do we maintain consistency from school to school, so that parents and students know how to navigate schools and our community, and the resources we have at our schools, whether they're in the elementary school, whether they're at Walker, whether they're at Buford, whether they're at CHS. So that's one of those items. The next team is working on instructional and professional learning. That would be making sure that if, what, what changes do we need to make in how we teach students, and how do we equip our teachers to really meet all those different needs? The third team is community engagement, things like communications, partnership, looking at how we can really make sure that we're, we're kind of maximizing and empowering our chief partners, which are the students themselves and their families. The last one is really foundational work, with things like an equity policy, definitions, and metrics. So we're asking big questions and really thinking through, how we, what does success look like? What are chief goals? So that's, those are the four teams. In italics, and this, this presentation is, is up on the school board site, and we'll put it on some of the Equity pages on the website as well. But in italics, for each work group, are the staff members who are the points of contact for each work group. You'll notice that there were no student names on that first slide, so we had taken pains to make sure that student voice is being included. When Daniel Fairley was asked to be on this committee, he was asked in part, as a liaison to students through mechanisms such as the Charlottesville Youth Council. Same thing with Eric Yarizari, all the principals really, but primarily Eric Yarizari, as he's worked with students. I'm seeing some skepticism on at least one student's face, so this is something we can discuss, and you all can discuss. But I will also just say that students, we have, I think, as with all groups and all stakeholder groups, we have provided multiple ways for students to engage on this topic, and I've listed some of them there, and some of them are student-created, and that we welcome as well. So I think those are some of the ways that we feel like we have tried to reach out for students. In addition to that, there were about, let's say, twelve to fifteen other groups in the communities that we worked, reached out to. We went to congregations, we went to community centers, we held meetings in our schools. And I think students were present at virtually all of those, or at least a good number of those. So those are some of the ways that we've tried to reach out, and like I say, I, I hope the posture that we're taking on all this is that we do want to listen, that we do want to empower our students. I think anybody who's been watching CHS in the last couple of years, anybody who's been watching our country in the last couple of years, knows that we need to keep students alongside us and listen to student voice, and empower students to make changes in the The work of the committee, just briefly, there are probably four big ideas on here. This is an advisory committee. They will help us review the feedback we're hearing from the community. They will help us make some of the foundational decisions about what, how exactly we're going to measure equity, and what, what goals are important. Is it to, to compare our local students against national standards? Is it to erase achievement gaps or opportunity gaps between black and white students? Is it to compare, there's lots of different ways of framing this, and I want to, we need to lean into the commu, that committee to help us figure out what our approach is going to be. That committee is actually, each of those work groups is going to be making recommendations for what they would like to see our efforts go to, and hope, and as I said, they're chiefly guided by the feedback we're receiving from the community. So we're just looking for a tool to help us make sure that we're listening to the community fully, and reflecting the shared power and the shared expertise of the people inside the building and the people outside the building in the community. One final idea on this slide, that you'll see later in the presentation too, is that we're not looking to build a new equity program, we're really just hoping to make sure that equity is pervading all of our programs, and that we're really using it as the lens and evaluative tool for how we consider our programs and how we make decisions about our programs. Four foundational ideas that our committee agreed to are here on the slide, and I don't know that I need to read every single one of them, but one is to embrace discomfort, because this is difficult work, it's complex work. The next is to consider that we're all in the same team. I think that's one thing, so far as we've listened, people may have different strategies or different particular ideas about the best ways to move forward, but we have very, very similar values and goals for this work, and really, even in terms of the bigger ideas about, if you look at the minutia, there are differences, but if you look at big themes, there's incredible commonality in the community. And so we all just need to recognize that whether it's someone who's on the committee, or whether it's a parent at home, or whether it's a student in a classroom, that we're on the same team for prioritizing the needs of our children. Similarly, we're assuming good intention, and, and related to that, we're asking clarifying questions if we see something that doesn't seem to have good intention, so that we can get to the bottom of, of the matter. And those are the, those are ideas that our committee has agreed to, but I, I hope they're ideas too, that the community as a whole would come alongside with. The work so far, Dr. Atkins last month gave a pretty substantive update in her newsletter to the community, and also, I think she read those and commented on those last month, so I won't go into them, but I think they're, they're substantive things that are worth noting in, in, in the update. Other equity updates and commitments, again, this is just a sampling, but the previous slide would be a good start. I think our continued rollout of social emotional learning and mental wellness, multi-tiered supports in areas of academics, behavior, mental health, attendance, last year's new math and writing curricula, the new reading curriculum that is under discussion for this year, professional learning to support our commitment to unleveling classes further at CHS and at Buford and at Walker. I'm, I'm not gonna read this whole list, but you can see that it's a very substantive list, and these are all, many of these build on prior year's work, but these are all things that we are actively working on right now. So one might ask, with all this effort, two slides worth fine print, right, when are we going to see improvements? And I don't know, I should have mentioned Colleen, I mean, Charlene Green, she actually is a member of my own community engagement group, and this idea, these ideas on this particular slide are ones that our group had a, had an honest conversation about, just on Monday, is that right?
I think it was Monday.
I think on Monday, so I don't know, Charlene, if you care to jump in on any of these ideas or just...
You start.
All right. We have, we do want to just acknowledge some sobering realities that we find both in our work here in the schools locally, but more importantly, these are common themes that communities across the country, we can learn lessons from around the country. Number one, there is no magic wand, and I'm just gonna read word for word here. As we review models and practices from peer divisions and national organizations, we see signs of hope, but we do not find a community where these challenges have been so-called fixed. Number two, there will be no quick fixes. Equity work is complex and can often appear slow-moving. Critical foundation work may not be easily visible. Progress will be measured in years, not months. Number three, change is hard. Schools across the state and nation that are committed to equity find themselves criticized both for doing too much and for doing too little. And fourth, mistakes happen. Our schools have made mistakes in the past, and despite our best efforts, we will make more in the future. We need to plan now to respond appropriately and to use mistakes as learning opportunities.
Good evening. Thank you. I think, in thinking about all of this and the conversations that we're having with the Community Engagement Subcommittee of this Equity Team, is really making connections with some of the other conversations that are also going on throughout the community. I think about the one that I just had last night with the university's Working Committee, commissioned by President Ryan, and how, in having our culminating conversation, recognizing the fact that all of these things up here are, are the major banners at which we need to pay close attention to, because you're talking about creating trust and relationship-building with the community. And if they don't trust us, because we send the, the wrong message that this is gonna happen quickly, that, that, oh, we got this, kind of thing, and we don't acknowledge and be humble with the fact that things are not gonna be perfect, then it is gonna make this work that I know we all are committed to, that much more difficult. And so, thinking about the trust that we need from the staff, the trust that we need from the students, the trust that we need from the community, is going to require us to be very real with how we approach this work, and to encourage and, and in fact depend, expect that everybody is watching everything that we do. And so for us to just be ready to slap ourselves upside the head with those reality checks, that all those things are really important, I think that's gonna be a really big step in telling the community that the way in which we're approaching this work this time is going to be different. That was a big part of the conversation last night, 'cause I know all of us, especially myself, because I've been in this community now almost thirty years, and I've been a part of way too many committees that have come together to create, to address an issue, often in relationship to equity and diversity, and then a beautiful report is created, and then we stick it up on the shelf, and we pat ourselves on the back and say, well done, until the next thing happens. And we can't do that. I'm tired of doing that, and I know our community is tired of us doing that. The students who come before us in every capacity, in the work that I do, the schools, out in the community, they're tired of it. They see it every day, and they're trying to tell us, look, we have to do this differently. So I think it is our responsibility to listen to them. And, and so we've got a lot of folks who are having some very honest conversations under the, the leadership and guidance of Dr. Atkins to make this happen. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to be a part of this, this, this group, and I know for me, my commitment, especially as a parent, not just as a community member, that I want this focus on equity to be different and to put us on the right path.
Are there any other slides you wanna jump in? Just tap them shoulders, stay up here over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene.
So again, the work of this committee primarily is continued listening, it's prioritizing, it's evaluating what we're already doing, it's recommending next action steps. The community priorities we've heard so far, I, I think you all know this process has been more than fifteen meetings with staff members, with community members, with students, at schools, at community centers, at houses of worship. That, that data, it's a big old spreadsheet of data, and it's been presented to the committee, it's on our website, it's been up for a couple of weeks now. Of four are primarily African-American respondents. The top five priorities from that exercise were, it's no surprise, they've been pretty fixed, and they've been pretty fixed among virtually every group, you know, there's some variation from group to group, but there's a lot of commonality. Hiring and supporting teachers of color. Equipping teachers to meet the needs of all students. Making supports like tutoring. Making supports like tutoring easily available. Promoting student diversity within classrooms. Supporting and retaining effective teachers and principals. As I say, from group to group, there might be some variation about the order of these priorities, there might be some that pop in and out of the top five. I think if you were to look at, well, another piece to keep in mind when you think about those 32 top priorities, they got put on the list because they came up over and over again. And so, when I was at various churches, when I was at various community centers, a common refrain was, "Where do I vote for all of the above?" So just because an idea is listed as number 20 or number 32 on that list doesn't mean that it doesn't have community support. But we can't, in some ways, we are tackling all 32 of those ideas, but if we're really going to throw our energy, we can't throw our energy into 32 ideas all at once, especially because many of those 32 ideas are big ideas that have a lot of moving pieces even within We have heard other community input from groups such as the CHS Black Student Union, the NAACP Education Committee, the Charlottesville Youth Council, and so that's another piece. In many cases, that community, that feedback, like the feedback that the BSU gave us in the fall was folded into the original 32 ideas. Other pieces, sometimes we've just passed it along as a discrete section for the Equity Committee to review. I'd like to just take a moment to look at the ideas from the Black Student Union from, that were presented about a week and a half ago. This is the first slide of two. And I'm not going to touch on each one of these right now. There is a letter from the School Board and from Dr. Atkins that is on the website, and I don't think it's super accessible right now. I'll give a link in a moment, and even later tonight I can make it more accessible. But for the moment, for instance, and for people who are looking at this online on the School Board website, if there's one of these topics that they are particularly interested in, what have the schools been doing around this? Or what do the schools think about this idea? There's an extended, there's a paragraph or two in response. Of the 10 ideas, the schools have been working very actively on each of those 10 ideas, maybe not in every kind of detail of the 10 ideas, but in terms of the larger issue that the 10 ideas represent. So I don't know if any of you wants to call out a recommendation or ask for a click on any one of those ideas, but I'm happy to do that now or to give a little bit of explanation about any of these ideas now, or we can just leave it to you to read the letters and to follow up on things later. So we can read it from there. You know, I think the big picture there is that we're happy with some of the work we've done on this. Suspensions have dropped at our schools 80% in a decade, which is astonishing. But the bad news is that it's still disproportionately impacting our low-income and our black and brown students. So I, the idea of having a disciplinary committee to kind of oversee the work, I think that's the kind of thing that this Equity Committee would be making a recommendation for. But on the other hand, we've been working very vigorously on this issue from the other end, the prevention end, in many ways. And so, that's really been where our effort has been going with social emotional learning, with positive behaviors, with multi-tiered supports, and those are the kind of areas that we've gotten state and national recognition for. I think even, I think Dr. Kraft was the one who mentioned earlier tonight the mental health first aid program that we, you know, we're one of two schools in Virginia, we're one of eight schools nationwide to be selected as that pilot. It's really reflective of this larger, really comprehensive push, starting with social emotional learning in kindergarten, on up to mental health first aid in high school, to really be proactive and more positive in the approach so that we're not, so we're hopefully not going to be seeing the discipline problems to begin with. Any others that, any other topics that you want to talk about while we're in this presentation?
I really do appreciate the way you've set it up. I think that once we make it more publicly available, like going through ESB is a challenge, so if it's on our website, it'll be more accessible, but I think it, the list is right there and easy to click on, so thank you so much for setting it up like that.
Thank you. So this is page two of the items. And then the last, the last slide is really just a link to where you can find it already, the letter already, but also, there's got a tweet on there that I hope conveys some of the school division's posture, that we are proud to be a school division that has such vibrant student leadership. We want to listen to not only our students, but our staff, our parents, our community members. And honestly, listening is, I think, I hope Charlene would say, it's one of the ways that we hope that this movement will be different than some of the other movements that we've had in our own school system, that we've had in our own community, that we've seen across the state and the nation. I hope that we'll be able to maintain that posture. So as we hedge towards end of this presentation, I'm going to mention three big ideas that I think are important for us to keep in mind, and again, I'm just going to go ahead and read from this slide. One is that I think if you read through the board and Dr. Atkins' response to the BSU statement, you're going to see that it's an example of how the community's desires and feedback and values are reflective of the board and the staff's goals as well. In this way, in many ways, the community's input has been affirming of the school's past and current work. But that raises a question. Because, under persistent challenges, the similarities that we find between what the community asks us to do and what we have been doing really raises the question, why aren't we consistently seeing better results? As we answer this question together, let's remember that these are persistent challenges for our nation. And again, I wish there were a magic wand where we could say, "Oh, if we only did this a little harder, a little faster, a little better, we would make these things go away." We can maybe find isolated pockets where people have led the way and we are certainly trying to learn from them. But this is, I just feel like Charlene was saying, unless we are keeping it real, we're only going to be setting up ourselves and other people for disappointment. So these are the questions. I think the key words under persistent challenge is asking the question, if we're working and doing the right things, why aren't we consistently seeing better results? We need to answer this question together. Equity lens, that's back to the idea that I mentioned at the beginning. While new approaches arise and some changes are already being rolled out, our intent is not to create a special program called Equity or to add one more thing to what we're doing. Instead, the idea is to use Equity as the lens for evaluating and refining all of our So this really, this question is honestly, to some degree, more for the community than for us, but I will ask you also if you have questions or feedback or if you want to co-host a discussion. The contacts there are for the, for me, as a person who's been facilitating the Equity Community up to this point. You may also feel free to reach out to any specific member of that committee, and for school-specific questions, of course, your school principal is a good place to start. And for overarching concerns, I threw you guys under the bus. But you can certainly reach out to the School Board or Central Office Admin, because I really do believe that we just need to keep listening and pinpointing what, where are we missing the mark? If we're, generally speaking, on the right road with some of the intents and the priorities that the community has asked us to have, why, what's not right? What are we not doing right? And we're only going to learn that by listening to students, by listening to teachers, by listening to parents, by listening to alum, et cetera.
Thank you so much for all of your work with respect to going to these forums and being a member, active member of the committee, and also supporting Dr. Atkins and me and this effort, and I thank you. And I would now like to open it up to any questions or comments that the board might have of Beth. Yes, Dr. Kraft?
Well, I think this is an incredible effort that's being launched by our division. And, you know, I think it shows a real commitment and a lot of leadership on our part to try to do something comprehensive and real. And so, what I'm wondering about, I mean, we're doing all this, but I think embedded in, you know, one of the challenges is that, you know, we're doing great things, but why aren't we having, always having the best results? It involves the rest of the community. So I'm wondering, is the city of Charlottesville doing equity work? Are they, is there a parallel process somehow going on? You know, because I think, you know, I'm thinking as we just came through our budget cycle, I guess I would like to understand where those issues fit for, you know, those who have to approve our funding to do some of these things.
I think Charlene is definitely the better person to answer this question, but I am going to say, one quick idea that kind of fits into our group with the community engagement work is a pretty common theme that people submitted from the website or at community forums was the idea of community efficacy, of having shared goals throughout the community for nonprofits, for the city, for the schools, et cetera. So that is one approach that our working group is exploring. In fact, I'm going to a conference in May in Chicago on community efficacy. So that's one small piece, but I think, Charlene, there's nobody better equipped to answer that question than Charlene.
Thank you. So the city is doing mainly two things. So there's an internal equity assessment that is happening right now. There's a team of people, I'm a part of that team, that meets on a regular basis, trying to figure out what do we need to do with, within our departments, with city employees, with our process better, that addresses all of the concerns that we have in terms of expectations of other groups, such as the nonprofits or the different agencies that we deal with. So we need to make sure our house is in order. And so, that's a conversation that we're having, and we're trying to figure out, what does that look like? How do we measure it? How do we make sure that all of our employees, just like with the conversation we're having with the school community, how do we make sure we have complete buy-in from folks? And the second way in which we're trying to address the equity issue is looking at some sort of social impact assessment. So with the policies and procedures that are put in place, any of the decision-making that goes on from the city council's perspective, any of the boards and commissions that have a, excuse me, a responsibility for sending recommendations to the city council for them to address, what are those filters that we use to make sure that we're taking into consideration how those decisions and those policies impact the community? And so, I think those right now are the two primary ways in which the city is trying to figure out how to address equity concerns from the employee side and from the community side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Bryant?
So I found the sobering reality slide to be pretty ironic considering no one's really asking the board to have a magic wand. I mean, I think a sobering reality would be the fact that this is a generational problem. So many of the students at CHS have had parents who have gone through CHS who have faced the exact same problems. So I think that it's giving a bit of a weird allusion to suggest that perhaps we're asking for there to be an overnight turnaround, when in fact, this conversation has been going on since the 90s, the 80s. So I want us to be very clear about that. Another area of concern is the fact that in response to our discipline concern, there is a response of, "We won this award." And I think that that doesn't quite show parents and other students who are bearing the bad end of the stick, who are being excessively disciplined. I don't think they want to hear that, "We won this award," right? So I think as far as the tone of the presentation, it's very self-congratulatory, and it's a bit dismissive. And so, if we want to be real, since that's what's been on the floor tonight, we need to be real about the numbers and be real about the suspensions, because BSU didn't just pull that out of thin air. And so, I think in response, it would be more adequate for us to see numbers of how many black and brown students are being disciplined. Those numbers should be kept, and if they're not, they should be next year. And I've been asking for those numbers, and I haven't been able to find them, so perhaps a FOIA needs to happen from many different people in the community so that we can get that information. But I just hope that moving forward, our response to people bringing very real concerns forward isn't, "We won this award," or "Things don't change overnight," or "We're just one division in the whole nation," because your response can't always be, "It's a national problem." We know that, like, no one's doubting that. But what we do have control over is our division. So if we want to see change, we can start with our division. Thank you.
Agreed.
Yeah, I don't think anything in this presentation says anything other than, "We are trying, we are working on it." Also, I think if you want to get those numbers, they are actually part of a report I think we get in October. And so, certainly available on our ESB. And if it's not on ESB, then the VDOE keeps track of that. And, you know, I'm certain, the thing is, is like, we're always happy to work to try to get information that you need or you want. And so, I appreciate that that is something that you want, and I think we can be happy to get it for you. It's the first I've heard of it.
Really? Well, I asked the Principal Carter over at Beaufort, and then I asked Dr. I, can we keep records of numbers of gender and...
No, I think that it's the first time I've heard of it. It's not an unusual, like, I, you know, the principals don't talk to me. I'm sorry?
I said, I think it should be on the website.
It is on, under our ESB. We get the report in October, and that is where it would be.
Okay, well, maybe you should attach that to that slide, so that people can easily find it and know where it is.
Yeah, you have to.
Sorry. Maybe you should attach those numbers to that slide so that no one has to be confused about where it is.
I would like to apologize for any sort of self-congratulatory tone. That certainly was not the intent. I do think, on the other hand, that we have to acknowledge what we have been doing, because I think, like I say, the real crux of this issue is, we have been doing work around this issue, yet we have not consistently seen the results that we want to. So we need to, we need to acknowledge what we've done, and we always need to keep our eye on where we need to be. And that's making sure that we're all aware of what's been going on and where we want to go. That's, I hope, the approach that's going to get us further.
Okay. Dr. Atkins, yes?
Thank you. And I appreciate all the comments that have been made, and I think one of the areas in which we have highlighted as foundational is going to be, this work is difficult, and I agree with Ziana, it didn't start today nor yesterday. Actually, it has been a part of our country and this community dating back to the first day that Africans were brought to this country. And so, it's a longstanding systemic issue that we have faced. And we're finding that as we go into this work, that some of the structures that are in place that we just take for granted, that that's the way we do it, are structures that have been put in place with the intent many, many years ago, 50 years ago, 100 years ago, with the intent to keep the races separate. So it is our intent to face these issues head-on. It will not be easy. We've had a discussion tonight about courses offered at Beaufort. Now, a discussion about courses offered at Beaufort is another way in which we're using equity in order to make decisions. When we start making those type of decisions, it will require us to have a great deal of dialogue, interaction, as we're making those decisions, because we are now looking at decision-making through a different lens, not the way we've always done it, but how do we do it in a way in which, and make decisions, that we can include all students and benefit all students at the same time? So that means that we must change, and change is not easy. And we're going to be having many, many discussions over the next few months that will challenge some of our programs, some of our practices, and help to push us in a direction in which we reassess and adjust so that we can make sure that we're responding to the needs of all of our students. It will be a long process.
Walker, not Beaufort.
I'm sorry, Walker, not Beaufort. Thank you, Ms. Pergie. Thank you, Ms. Pergie. There are biases. We've been talking about implicit biases that we as human beings have. One of the other areas that we must start talking about also are the implicit biases that we find in testing. I don't think we can leave that out of this conversation. Was that one of our schools during the week, and we had an incredibly beautiful telling example of biases that we find in testing? The question, it was in a reading passage, and this was an SOL question. In a reading passage, a student, a young girl in the passage, and I think this was either at the third grade or fourth grade level, the young girl lost her shoe. So, therefore, the question was, "How does she feel?" I'm sure it was more complex than that, but the essence of the question is, "How do you think the girl feels who lost her shoe?" Maybe her name was Mary. "How do you think Mary feels because she lost her shoe?" When we went back and disaggregated data to look at which students got that question correct, which students got that question incorrect, we were very happy to see that all of our students really scratched off the one that really didn't connect, the answer that didn't connect to the story. However, the two most probable answers, we found a different story with our students. We found that our students of color, our black students, answered the question, "How did the girl feel?" Scared. She was afraid. Our students who are our white students, answer to the question was, "The girl was concerned." One was right and one was wrong. The answer concerned was right. The answer afraid was wrong. It depends on your perspective. However, when the test is being graded, there's only one right answer. And the perspective on that right answer is a perspective in which you would be concerned because you have multiple pairs of shoes, or we can get another one. However, from a student's perspective, who may only have one pair of shoes, and I can tell you that was, when I was growing up, if I'd lost one of my shoes, my answer on that was scared, because mom would say, "You needed to be more responsible, and why'd you lose that shoe?" So, I think we have to talk about our own personal implicit biases, but we cannot leave out the biases that we find in standardized testing, regardless of the level at which is being tested. So, thank you, Beth, and thank you, everyone. Thank you, Zionna, and all of our school board and our community. The work is hard. It will not be quick, but what we have dedicated ourselves to is, we are going to make changes. And I'm proud of the changes that we have made so far in some of the structures that we have put in place. I am so excited about the program of study for Walker for next year. That represents a lens of equity, looking at the courses that we're offering for our students to make sure we engage all students. So, thank you to the board, and thank you to our community for your comments. We will continue to work on our language program, our world language program, and strengthen that so that all students can be engaged in that also. So, thank you very much. There is a statement that I'd like to read that we have included in one of our letters. And the question is, "Why is equity so important? Some of us will speak of right and wrongs, and some of us will speak of the beauty and the value of diversity. As a black woman and a human, I am vested in justice and I'm inspired by diversity." I also focus on Dr. Martin Luther King's statement and his reminder that we are all interrelated and tied in a single garment of destiny. What happens to one of us will affect all of us. The future, health, and prosperity of Charlottesville, not just Charlottesville city schools, but the entire community, depends on all of us, all of the members of our community. I'm struck by the words that the Australian artist Leila Watson expressed on behalf of the Aboriginal community. If you have come here to help me, you're wasting your time. But if you have come because your liberation is bound up with mine, then let us work together. Charlottesville, let us all work together on this issue. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, and thank you, Ms. Chuck. Is there any other comments? Special education annual plan. I'm sorry, you are up, and I don't know your name.
Katrina.
Katrina. I don't want to call you Katrina, though. What is her name?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Atkins, good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Lee.
So, in your package, you have the actual anecdotal pieces of the special education annual plan with the data and the numbers. But I wanted to look at this a little bit differently, and it's a short slide in the Department of Special Education and Student Services, our 2019-2020 Special Education Annual Plan, looking at every learner, every day, everyone, working with all of our students, even though we represent the Special Education Department, looking at all of our students. Our special education funding, as you can see above, is based on our December 1 child count and how many students we have identified as students with disabilities. Our allocations are broken down for the next upcoming FY '20 school year in personnel services, which are our teachers, instructional assistants to serve our students directly in the schools, purchase services, which serves to meet some of the needs of our students who may have interpreting needs, who may have needs for other services that we don't provide in the school setting, and materials and supplies and other charges to support our students in the classrooms with materials, supplies, assistive technology devices, and other items that are specialized for our students. So, that is a breakdown. And the next slide, this kind of captures this with the pictorial view of looking at how those funds are allocated. I mean, this kind of shows you visually that those federal funds that come into Charlottesville city schools are largely with personnel and our employees and benefits. Are there any questions?
So, it says, "Personnel and employee..."
Benefits is missing from there, so I apologize.
Oh, okay. Benefits, okay.
Benefits disappears, so that is employee benefits.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Lee, thank you so much. Is there any other?
That's just the last slide for our goal.
Thank you.
Yay.
So, this is just an information item this month. My understanding is next month you would be coming back for approval of this plan?
Yes, we'll request action next month.
Okay.
So, we bring you back again next month.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you.
You did a good job.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is another opportunity for members of the community to make a public comment. And so, what I would like, especially since we haven't had an opportunity to sign up, if you do come up, can you say your name slowly and your address slowly for the record purposes? So, also, it's going to be limited to three minutes, and anybody would like to come up and speak for our second public comment? Dr. Ogden?
I'm Amy Ogden, and my address is 214 Camelia Drive.
I am Nate Ogden-Apt, and I have the same address.
Right.
And I just wanted to echo Dr. Hastings and Ms. McKeever's comment about how important it is that we show what we value in our curriculum. And I want to make it clear that tonight, you cut the Spanish requirement and the cultural studies requirement by one-third. In doing this, Charlottesville City Schools has fallen further behind Fairfax County, which requires five, through fifth grade of foreign language study, if not sixth grade. We've also fallen further behind all of the private schools, or nearly all of the private schools in our area, who require foreign language study in, through their middle school or starting in their middle school if that's where they start. So, I urge you not to lose the commitment that you all expressed tonight to improve what remains in the first through fourth grades by investigating immersion options seriously, which is a lot of work, a lot more work than just keeping the requirement in fifth and sixth grades, but go for it, and increased innovation and rigor in the Spanish program that exists. This is important work that needs to be done.
I strongly agree that foreign language education should be strengthened. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all coming out. Are there any other public comments?
My name is Ken Horn. I actually live in the county, but I work in the city, and I just wanted to come tonight in support of Zionna Bryant and the Black Student Union's demands. And just to say that, you know, given the long history of racism and segregation in this community, as well as the more recent history of what's been going on the last couple of years since August 12th, I know you all are, I've been, it's been very nice to hear the way you all talk versus, I've been going to the county school board meetings, and they go a lot differently than this. But I know you all committed to these issues, but I just am here to support the demands because, as people have been saying tonight, it really does need to be done differently. These things have been, you know, folks have been trying to address these issues across the nation forever, and I think, not forever, but for quite a while, and we're not getting the outcomes and results that we need. And I think a lot of it has to do with not really addressing the institutional racism that a few of you have mentioned tonight, not really addressing white supremacy and the way that it is embedded in all of these systems, and that somehow we need to be talking about that with students at a very young age. One of the demands of the Black Student Union that I particularly think is, they're all important, but one that I really think is especially important is around the African-American history course and the emphasis that should be placed on that, for all students to really understand that history and to really understand the history of racism in this country and white supremacy and using the language and really talking about it. Because I know everyone says, it's true, it's hard, but we, I think we can come at it from another angle of, yes, it's hard, but it's so important, and what a better society we're going to have when we all, you know, live these values and really emphasize them at a young age in the public school system. And so, I just am here from the county to say that I think this needs to be a county and city effort, and I hope that you all continue to take it really seriously and support the students' demands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Ken Horn. So, are there any other comments?
Hi, my name is Andrea Massey. I'm a city resident. Just wanted to thank, thank the board for their handling of the threat a couple of weeks ago. I think that was handled just really, really well, and I just want to say thank you. I appreciate it for me and our community and my daughter and all of our residents. I want to thank Zionna and BSU for organizing the walkout the Monday following and with the list of the 10 demands. I thought the walkout was so needed and well-attended, and again, I thank Dr. Atkins. I saw you get there, and the principal for supporting the students in that effort. I thought that made a lot of impact. Has anyone read the demands tonight? Were they, they were read? Okay, sorry, I missed that. I was going to do that if they had have been.
They were not read.
Not read out loud.
And I know, I actually had a telephone meeting scheduled with Dr. Atkins on the day the threat was made, so we haven't gotten back to that. But one of my questions was on the equity committees. How many, I just want to know, I'm just curious, like, how many committees there are? Who is on them? Can community members come if they're not on them and just listen in to know what's going on? And how is the outreach done to make sure students and parents of the communities of color that are affected by the inequities, are they on the committees with a voice that is being listened to by the decision-makers? I just wanted to know how to get that information. And with this award that has been recently granted to the Charlottesville High School, I'm not sure if that was the high school or the school district as a whole, the award, the mental health or the Lady Gaga thing, if that was being sort of integrated and looked at through the lens of equity and making sure that that award is tied into all the other work that's going on? Who is running that? Is there a person being hired for that? Is it being, are we doing everything possible that if someone is running that, that that is a person of color who is running that? So, that was one question. So, I have a lot of questions than anything else. And then, I just thank you, Dr. Atkins, for bringing up the testing bias, again, which I think, like, as we are looking at the Quest program and who is in it, I think looking at that testing bias is obviously extremely, extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Massey. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to go back to the board member comments, and I'll start on this side of it. Zionna? Ms. Bryant?
Those were all great questions raised by, like, both public comments, and I just hope that we can, like, I was looking at the people on the equity committee, and I wonder a lot about the selection process. And so, I would like to know if those are open meetings and how the outreach is going because I am definitely concerned about that. But at any rate, I hope that it turns out well. Thank you.
And congratulations to you on your decision about your future.
Thank you.
Very excited for you. Ms. Torres?
Again, just wanted to thank public comment towards the end of the meeting and the issues that you brought up. Also, again, want to thank Charlene Green always for your wisdom and the comments that you make. Agree that listening is a huge piece of this, and awareness and acknowledgement that this has been a longstanding, ongoing discussion. I hope personally, and I feel like this is a time and this is a place where it can be different, it should be different, based on what the city has been faced with, and the energy going into this feels different. I speak for myself individually that I am committed to doing everything I can to make this feel different, and I feel like all of my colleagues and Dr. Atkins feel the same way. I feel like the changes that will be proposed and will be happening may be small initially, and again, through that, that different equity lens, and that we as a community need to be braced for what that feels like. We as a board, you know, supporting those changes. I think communication, discussions, and some of these things that may be happening are not going to be popular to some parts of our community, and they may be uncomfortable. But I think to really look at racial equity and to address that, it requires proactive and continuous work to dismantle the systemic oppression, the longstanding racism that, like, Dr. Atkins spoke of. It's embedded in almost every single system that we are a part of, and we aren't even aware of it unless we're doing the work. So, I think a lot of people in this community are doing the work, and to dismantle it, it's, it's going to be hard work. But, you know, we need to also be okay with looking at, and I'm going to speak for myself right now, at any subtle biases or racism that I may have that are creeping up, but we need to do this at white privilege that is within our schools and for years and years and years. I mean, it is, it is part of the system, and we need to do the work and stick together. So, thank you for your comments and questions. comments and, and questions, and thank you to everybody for doing all of this work together.
Thank you. I just wanna go over a couple of things. One is that James and I, I guess, we're gonna be on the panel next week at the OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute, and I think Dr. Rosario is gonna be on it as well. So looking forward to that. And the budget, the city has approved the, the budget. They've done that, so that, that's good. And I just wanted to speak on quickly what Lisa talked about with the university community working group. We did meet here maybe a couple of weeks ago, because one of the things that we decided to, that we said that we would do when we got public input was that we would let the community know what the results were. So we wanted to have essentially a report out. And so we, we met here and talked with those who came, I think it was about 40 or 50 people, and, and we got some good feedback. And one of the things that we heard clearly is that they wanted the effort to, to move on. The president, you know, of course, quickly moved and supported a $15 living wage, and, and Charlene mentioned it, but the group met with the president and senior-level staff yes, last night, went much longer than we expected, looking to see, you know, what we can do about the other recommendations that we came up with. And we, and a lot of discussion is the same kind of tone that we heard in this room today about institutional racism and ingrained in our society and our community, and what can we do to overcome that. And I think that it will take more than us around this table, those on the group. It's gonna take a community-wide effort, and I think that, that, you know, I've been in this community. I wasn't born here, but I've been here nearly 30 years, and I'm committed to making a difference in it. But I feel different about this, 'cause there seems to be, as Charlene again said, is that I've been on a lot of committees in the years, and, and, and I think it's more action that we're gonna see with this, and I really feel. But I'm not, you know, it's gonna take more than one committee, more, more than one recommendations for me to say, okay, we have, we've arrived. We have, we still have a lot of work to do. But I, I feel that I don't, you know, I would want to go into battle with anyone, no one else around this table, because I know that we're, we're committed to doing it. And I've talked with each of y'all individually. We've talked with it as a group. I know Dr. Atkins is committed and her staff. I, I think that we, we can do that, and we have a very involved youth group. You know, we're, we're committed. And, and, you know, I know that, you know, that Charlottesville, we're on the front line. I mean, it's, in my mind, maybe I'm just kinda cynical. It seemed like every other subdivision in the state can get away with doing anything, but we're, you know, we have to do everything tomorrow. And, and, and we're gonna, we, this is not gonna change overnight. And I think that as long as we're in the front line and with the bull's eye or whatever, then I think that, you know, because a lot of our children, they go from district to district. A brown student that's discrimi, that's being discriminated against, they don't say, okay, what school district you live in, where are you coming from? It impacts us all. So I think that we really have to, you know, put some of our resources, not just on City of Charlottesville, but, you know, the entire community, you know, 'cause there are a lot of brown students in Albemarle. There's a lot of brown students in Green and, and Nelson and other places as well. And so I think that we need to look at those districts as well, so that we, all of our, all of our brown students can achieve as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Ms. Perrier?
I've listened to everything that everyone has had to say this evening. Change is hard and change is difficult. But anyone that is in this community that says they're committed, then they are going to have to take some very serious hits, because you're not going to be the favorite people in the community if you stand for equity. I'm not talking about justice, I'm talking about equity, because there are various types of justice. There's social justice, there's food justice, there's housing justice, but I'm talking about equity. I don't think anyone around this table takes foreign language lightly. I don't think anyone around this table thinks that foreign language is not important. But I think what the people around this table feel is that we need to do a better job in instruction for all children. One of the things that this country does that has brought about a lot of problems has nothing to do with the color of one's skin. It has to do with the developmental level of children in general. And if you read several studies, you'll look at how we, in this country, instruct math and why children have difficulty often in math. And it's not because you can't do math because of your zip code or your skin color. It has to do with your brain development and your ability to grasp certain subjects, no. Grasp certain techniques, yes. And so if we're talking about foreign language being important, and we're talking about foreign language immersion, what does that look like? And what is that going to mean? And how are we going to do that? I have a friend who is not from this country that is scared to death, to death, of taking the citizenship exam. We've gone over the flashcards, and oh, my lord, are there a lot. But there are certain things that they are going to have to write, and they are afraid if they write it and one cannot read it, or it doesn't make sense, or the answer to the question is not the right answer, that they will not become a U.S. citizen. And I think what the division wants, we understand that there's not always a right or wrong, but we want our children to be able to perform. And it's gonna be incremental. We will revisit all of the issues that have come up this evening at Walker. We will revisit other issues in the other eight buildings, because we have nine academic buildings. But we also must understand that this is a group effort. It's not just your, your children. It's not just the parents. And it's not whether you have a child in the division because they've graduated or because you've never had a child in the division. There's right and there's wrong. And because of the color of some people's skin, it has always been right. And if you say that you're committed to equity regardless of the color of your skin, your socioeconomics or your zip code, you're going to stand up. So when these things begin to happen, you've got a group of people that are sitting in front of you that are willing to stand up, are willing to be called names, are willing to be threatened, because we believe that that's what your children deserve. My question is, who else will be standing?
Dr. Kraft?
And how do I follow that? I would like to applaud the eloquence of my colleagues, fellow board members tonight. I, I don't think that I can really add to that. I agree with it, and I feel very honored and privileged to be a part of this important process in Charlottesville at this time. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be a part of this. I wanted to mention one other thing. It's sort of connected, but we just got done, our division just got done with their annual art show. And it is a remarkable thing to see the talent of our students in our division from pre-K through 12. And, you know, I was sitting here thinking that that is a place where I, I think all children have a chance to shine, and the talent of, of all of our children has an opportunity to be expressed. So it's something we can look at in our division. It's, it's just amazing. You know, you look at this work, you don't know, you know, who's this and who's that and who's privileged and who's poor and who, they just make beautiful art. And I think it's something our division can be very proud of. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant?
I'd like to thank each of, all the board members for your birthday greetings. And again, Zion, I'd like to publicly congratulate you on your future endeavors. Wahoo, wahoo.
We're national champions.
Oh, yes.
For so many reasons.
Oh, yes. Congratulations. Also, I'd like to thank all of you all who came forward tonight to speak to the board with your concerns, and certainly we do not take them lightly. And as a board, we will, we'll continue to forge on. As I was sitting here, listening to the other board members, I was thinking about my journey as a student in this school system, going from a segregated school system and as we, to an integrated school system, and how, as a student of color, first generation, how we were treated and all the inequities that we had to endure. But that didn't damper my, my ability to, to work hard and to make a difference. And as a former educator, all of that played a role in how I taught in the classroom in terms of my experiences that I had. And I, I am so happy. A year ago, I was appointed to this board and elected to this board in November, and I could not think of a better place. I am so blessed and grateful that we have a superintendent, Dr. Atkins, who is leading the charge to ensure, along with this board, the commitment. I could not think of being in a better place, committed to ensuring that all of our children in the school system is given a fair shake regardless of their skin color or zip code. And I am committed, along with the others, to ensure that that is going to happen. I'm very passionate about it and have been passionate about it for many, many years. And I can't think of a better place to be than on this board, and the commitment that each one of these board members have in ensuring that we're gonna make that happen. And like we said, it's not gonna happen overnight, but we're gonna continue to work hard to ensure equity in the university and our school system for all children.
Mr. Ricky?
I won't repeat what everybody said, but I've been enjoying, listening to you and enjoying the, the energy around this issue, both in the community and, and the board and the, and the staff. And it's just really important that we continue to, to fight and continue to find answers and continue to make changes, however uncomfortable they may be. And so I look forward to that. That's one of the reasons I wanted to get back on the board, and I appreciate you all reappointing me so that I had an opportunity to be continuing to be involved in this, in this struggle. And on those lines, not everything's gonna be a brass tacks issue, but we did have some brass tacks items that didn't make the cut in our budget, and I hope that maybe at our next meeting, we can retalk about if there's a way to, to find funding for those things, because those were, some of the critical equity items in the budget didn't, didn't make it. And I know that there was some talk of some potential different ways to find funding, and I hope we can have that conversation.
I just want to say thank you to the staff and Dr. Atkins for their leadership here with respect to our equity discussions, and I really appreciate the community's input. I, yeah, it's just been a really busy month, and I'm looking forward to continuing the discussion as we move forward. And I really appreciate the parents and community members' comments to us. I think it's, I always appreciate it when our community is engaged in the issues that, you know, that we, I just appreciate the engagement. And so I continue to let us know what concerns you have, of course. And I will now move on from my, from the board members' comments to the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. I'd also like to hand out some thank yous, and, and the first one goes to Ms. McKeever. I just appreciate her so much. Ms. McKeever and I meet once a week or more. We talk a lot, numerous times over the phone. And each time that she comes in for us to meet, a different board member comes with her, Ms. Perrier or, or Ms. Torres, or a board member comes in with her, and we sit and we meet. And these are the kinds of issues that we talk about. And we talk about what the direction that we're going in. So thank you, Ms. McKeever, for your leadership, and thank you for the great and courageous conversations we've been having lately. They are meaningful. Thank you, Ms. Torres. Thank you to all the board members. Also, a public comment, thank you for your comments. I would, to Mr. Horn, Ken Horn, thank you for what you've said. Ms. McKeever and Ms. Perrier and I had the pleasure of meeting with representatives from Albemarle today, and we are starting to talk about how we might partner around these issues. Equity is important to both Albemarle and Charlottesville, and racism, to stop racism in both our school divisions and communities. So we are starting to talk now how we might partner together to do that, and that's really a step forward for us all. Also, with the, our equity committee, on our presentation tonight, we do have the names of the members of our equity committee. And I think, Ms. Massey, we're gonna be meeting very soon, so we can talk about that when we meet. Thank you so much. Also, thank you and congratulations to Ms. Bryant. She's made her decision. I know she's very excited, and I will continue to talk with her. She will be, and her group, the Youth Council, will be presenting to us in May. I've met with them, and Gretchen Ellis has been meeting with them, doing surveys, and there's a wealth of information that they have gathered that she'll be bringing to the board in May. So thank you for that. Also, on March the 15th, we want to send a special thank you to some of our school counselors, Sarah Hart and Deb Ashby. They organized a mock interview day for our seniors, and some of the division administrators served as interviewers with the students, and it was really nice. The students came in and practiced their interview skills with us. And so congratulations and thank you to Ms. Hart and Ms. Ashby for organizing that, and to the students, thank you for doing a great job. On March the 21st and March the 22nd, we want to send a special thank you to our community, and I'll name some of those community members in just a moment. But during the time that our schools were closed due to the internet threat, the Charlottesville City School Community organized a neighborhood-by-neighborhood parade to share pizza, snacks, books, games, and lots of love to our students. It was our principals, our teachers, our parents, the children of our teachers. It was every segment of our community represented. So a warm thank you to our community members. City of Promise, Piedmont Housing Alliance, Charlottesville Police Department, the City of Charlottesville, the Virginia Government, the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia, and all of the other agencies who donated food or supplies during that time. Thank you for loving our students, and thank you for being a part of helping our community on those days. Then on March the 25th, when our schools reopened, here's an example of some of the activity that was going on. We had signs outside welcoming- We had signs outside welcoming our students back as they got off of the bus. Lots of balloons, high fives, the high school. Our board members were out in our schools, standing at the buses to welcome our students back to school. So thank you to everyone for helping our students to know how important they are to us. Also, this week, Walker Upper Elementary School had fifth-grade orientation. And they deputized sixty peer leaders. They were the peer leaders and peer mentors who welcomed the fourth graders to Walker. And it was a fun time for everyone. So congratulations to all of the Walker peer mentors. They did a superb job in welcoming and making our fourth graders feel as if not only is their elementary school their home, but Walker is also one of their homes. A big congratulations, you've heard us talk about in the past, the renovations that took place during the summer at Clark. We were notified today that Clark Elementary School has been selected as the best elementary school renovation project in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So congratulations to all of the teams who worked to make that renovation happen. And thank you to Anna Isley and all of her teachers who so patiently participated in that renovation and patiently waited for everything to get ready for them to open school. We really appreciate that. Also, I had the opportunity to attend a luncheon, the Global Health Bureau Luncheon, which was held in one of the hotels downtown. And we met with a whole host of representatives from the University of Virginia, from the medical community and the educational community to talk about how we might engage with our global community around educational issues and health issues that not only affect other countries, but in turn affect us. So we thank you to that Global Health Bureau, the U.S. Global Leadership Coalition. I appreciate it being at the luncheon and will look forward to working with them. Our African-American teaching fellows, the executive director was there with us, and I'm gonna call her name in just a few minutes. Tamara Wilkinson, she was there also. So we had an opportunity to meet after that meeting to talk about what it might look like if we partnered with the representatives from the University of Virginia with ATF in our school system to perhaps create some opportunities for our teachers to get to better understand other cultures and other issues in those cultures and bring it back into our school as we teach those students. So I think that partnership might be beneficial for us all. And the last shout-out is for our University of Virginia. Congratulations to the men's basketball team, national championships. National championship. And I know Ziona was there just cheering them on. So congratulations to everyone. As a community, that basketball team has pulled us together in a way that we really needed to be pulled together. So thank you to the basketball team and congratulations to them. Happy birthday to Mr. Bryant and to Leah Purrier. Her birthday was on April the second. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McKeever.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. We have the work session wrap-up now. Thank you, Ms. Powell.
So there was a request to check on interest and feasibility for a skate club at CHS to take advantage of the new skate park. There is annual energy management report to the board that we will put into the rotation. Look at reporting vocational program participation by race and ethnicity, but that would need to exclude the personal finance requirement. And examination of world languages program, K-12.
Any other? Okay.
You didn't miss anything, Ms. Powell. Next month, we will be coming to the board for proposed textbook adoptions in reading and in geography. And I would just like to let the public know that those books are available for review in the annex lobby all next week.
And, Mr. Henderson, they are also in the individual elementary schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
If I may, as noticed, Jeanette Avanata was here earlier. There is the Root Celebration coming up. And I believe you all got an invitation to that. But a number of our own CCS staff will be recognized at that celebration. So be sure to look out for that invite.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, so our upcoming meeting is May 2nd, 2019 is our next school board meeting at 5:00 p.m. And I think that's all. It's after, it might be. Hearing no objections, we stand adjourned.